Next item, okay, so let's talk about this. Next item is in three parts. It's three separate applications by Longview Farms. We're gonna deal with it in one package. Now, at the end, there will be a vote of supervisors on each of the three individually, but we're gonna receive our reports in one package. We're going to hear public comment in one package. We're gonna hear from the applicant in one package. And we're gonna move through this, and we're gonna be here as long as you guys wanna be here on two conditions. So there's no requirement that we have this public hearing. This is, no, no break. This is Story County doing what Story County does and going above and beyond. Really, in all cases, but specifically as we talk about the master matrix system. So the request of everybody here, and you guys have been phenomenal today. That took a lot longer than we expected, I apologize. But we're gonna show respect, and we're not gonna be disruptive. And those are the only two conditions to us being here as long as you wanna be here. We'll go through it. Let me start with this. There are absolutely no bad people on either side of this, right? The Henrys are not bad people for proposing this, this. The people that live in close proximity that are concerned about the impact on their lives are not bad people, they're just concerned. And the people that are philosophically opposed to this kind of agriculture aren't bad people, they're just philosophically opposed. And so I'd like us to all keep that in mind as we move through this entire process. So we're gonna start by hearing from our civil attorney on what the process that Story County has adopted to work us through this is. Then we're gonna hear from Margaret Janes, who represents the committee that we have that checks all the scoring of the applicant. Then we might have some questions from the board. Then we'll hear from the applicant, we might have some questions from the board. Then we'll move to the public hearing and hear from all of you, anybody who wants to speak to us about this. I need to start with this before Ethan gets going. So about eight months ago, Morris Supervisor Olson brought to us a request to really dig in and look at what the county does with the master matrix. And so we had a couple of big workshops where we had DNR in, we had producers in, we had interested citizens in, and we looked at every detail. Well, Morris, you really ran that, so just talk us through exactly what we did and what we came to.
Okay, well, I wanna give a shout out to the staff. The staff ran it, okay, and organized it. But the thought, generating it forward was a way to not have such adversarial conversations and to see what we could do, given all the law, the way it was written, given the matrix, the way it stood, to see what could we do locally to at least kinda turn the furnace down a little bit. So, we did have, there was a gentleman from the DNR. We had two agriculture professors from Iowa State. I see a couple of faces in the cattle representatives here that spoke during it. We had our staff from our engineering, emergency management, environmental health. Mr. Anderson was there as our civil attorney. I'm gonna probably get a couple people, but we really had a robust discussion for about two, two and a half hours, but it really, I think, went forward to discuss what's in the matrix and what can be done as far as scoring varieties, what limitations or what power would you have of local control. And what we discovered is there's really not a lot of local control. And in the areas where we found that we might have a little, the staff able to make some judgment, a leeway, having to do somewhat with, say, roads and turnarounds and et cetera, those are not options that people normally took. That usually now, how the matrix is presented is that the producers or the confinement owners tend to take the distances, that's what they're paying attention to, and distances are pretty black and white. And so we ended with hopes that dialogue could go forward, and there is another, there's a cattle producer here in the room who had agreed to work with me. Unfortunately, I couldn't really get some conversations going on my own. That's a tough one, because it was not board sanctioned. So anyway, so that kinda ended up going by the wayside. But I'm glad we had the conversation. It helped clarify, at least in my mind, and I think some other people who attended it on both sides, about what the reality of the situation is right now when it comes to involvement of local government, local control. And I hope it will help for civility here today, too.
Superb, thank you, Morris. Marty, if you have anything to add before we get started?
No, I think that the time that we should spend is listening to the public speak to us so long we get the determinations that we use to have the recommendations placed before us to address the applications that we receive.
And that's exactly where we're gonna start. Ethan, talk to us about our process, what the state law tells us, and what we're doing today. And I need to say this, so the restrooms are right out by the elevator. We're not stopping, we're going straight through, there's not gonna be a recess. If you need to excuse yourself from me, excuse yourself, we're gonna do the same. Please don't take it as we're not listening, it's just gonna be time for us to take a quick break. Ethan, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Ethan Anderson with the county attorney's office. Thank you for having me today. I would like to add some additional thoughts to do with Morris just commenting on. Perhaps I'll just do the general introduction first and then get into more of the details that you just talked about. So, master matrix, county's role and responsibilities. On Iowa Code Chapter 459, in Iowa Administrative Code 56765, and as it says, there applies some process for local input with county board supervisors. But it's clear from the statute that it leaves the final decision-making power to the Iowa DNR. I wanna point out that some of my material on the slides over here came from IDNR and their publication of master matrix. It's available there online. I'm sure a lot of people here have a chance to review that and some of the talk we've been discussing. So the way you can get from 459 and from 4, from the Administrative Code, Section 6510, is some shell duties, I think included in the county, a couple of may duties. And so the shell, the first shell duty that the county has is that it should document receipt of the application, provide a copy to DNR, and Margaret has done so. The next duty you see on there is to provide public notice. We have DNR provide the official notice form for us to do that. I'm sure everybody's seen that in this case. Margaret's done that. And then the third is the county shall score the master matrix. Now, the way Story County does it is different than many other counties. Other counties maybe have one person planning his zoning or one person to handle the scoring. Story County, back in 2015, decided it would be appropriate to have a committee score these. And the goal there was efficiency, the role there was to provide, well, different county departments that have maybe more of a specialty or focus in some of those areas, to give their opinion and to have adaptive questions. And so that's why we can see that the county engineer was involved, planning the zoning, commission was involved, conservation was involved, assessor was involved. So we brought all hands to the table and raised this in a committee forum. Committee met, and we're running the committee, and what we sought to do was to be objective in our scoring. We wanted to be fair in our scoring. We wanted to satisfy that they met what the master matrix required. So, to point out, not every question you need to answer, I think every similarity needs a minimum score of 440 passed. It has to have 25% from three different areas, or maybe ten or so. Number four, the next shell option, the county shall visit, accompany DNR in a site visit, and then keep a copy of the inspection available, application available for public inspection. And the county provides proof of public inspection. And then, as Rick mentioned, begin with, I think a commendable board is willing to have a public hearing. That's fully optional, that's a may requirement under the code, you may have a code. So the county may have a public hearing to get public comments and support or against proposed confinement, and adopt a resolution, they may adopt a resolution with recommendations there. So that resolution is a may, and then we move on to that shell, and the county shall make recommendations. So this is the county irrespective of the score, regardless of whether or not it's a passing or data score, can be made recommendations. And finally, the shell submit that score to DNR, and to stress again, DNR has the final say on this permit. I'll go back to what Rick and Morris started the discussion with. Yeah, so it was back in July last year when we had, after July, master matrix, we had a chance to review design, operation, maintenance in the definitions section. So Margaret and I reached out to the people at DNR, talked to the AG, I'm sure you're responsible for advising DNR. And we were really looking at whether or not home rule, local home rule would give us an opportunity to go to some level of local control. And as Morris mentioned, we thought there might be an opening, that door was closed to us. As you can see here, we cannot exceed the standards of master matrix itself. We can't exceed the requirements of the Administrative Code. And we cannot, again, stay law. At the recent case, Seymour, the annotation is 755, four plus second, 537. And that stands for home rule, municipal county cannot draft or pass ordinance that expressly or implied within the state law. So we have to respect the master matrix that the legislature's given us, and we have to be objective and follow what it says. So examples, the committee met again to score the application on Friday. We met again in response to concerns from ICCI. We got a letter from them, and we thought it appropriate to reconvene the committee and to go through some of those comments. Says we did, but right example, some of our discussion, and Margaret, you may summarize this all there, but one of the things we discussed was question number 12. And question number 12 had to do with the roof, or whether or not the structure was covered. And the contention was that we need to consider whether or not there was an inspection plan, how it was to be inspected, who was to do the inspection, and what the timetable inspection was gonna be. And as the committee discussed it, we really looked at the question in the master matrix form, and the question did not address inspections. That was not in there, whether or not it was covered. And we decided then, or the committee discussed it, that that was not required by the matrix, therefore, we're gonna disregard that. And then we also discussed question 20. Question 20 has to do with whether or not there was history, history of administrative orders or reprimands for this applicant. And then we were reading the question, and we had some concerns about how to interpret the question. And so Margaret reached out to DNR, legal, I reached out to the AG's office again, and basically their response was, history is history. So if there's no history, there's no history. And that's how they intend to interpret the question, how they intend to grade the questions. So that is our guidance, we said, well, there is no history, and so we voted to award the points for that category. But these questions get to design, operation, maintenance. And the committee's role, and the committee's objective was to follow what the master matrix itself said. We wanted to do what it said, we wanted to read the questions, in light of the master matrix itself in the definitions section in the Administrative Code, and they had decisions based on that. We didn't look to add anything to it, in fact, we can't add requirements. Humboldt County had experience where they attempted to add requirements, local requirements on a master matrix, gave an applicant a failing score. DNR got that application, disregarded everything Humboldt County did, we graded it for passing score, approved construction. So what we need to keep in mind here is, you know, thinking about this process, we've been given the master matrix from the legislature. We're gonna follow that as a county, and we recommend to the board that they follow the master matrix, as the committee did, and then we'll all make a decision whether or not to approve or deny. And then I think I'll turn it over to Margaret to bring the discussion to a conclusion.
Good afternoon, thank you for being here today. I made my presentation quite short because I'm speaking to a very sophisticated audience. Everyone who has called me is well informed as to the process, so I'll go through these as quickly as I can so that we can get to the comments, which I feel is extremely important. Everyone who called, asked if it's a done deal, I said no, it is not a done deal, your voice is important, we need to hear that. As Ethan talked about earlier, we have a committee that reigns these, and we are held to the requirements of Iowa Administrative Code Chapter 65 when conducting our review. The committee includes Jared Moore with planning and development, Vera Moon, engineer, Mike Cox, conservation, Aaron Steele, planning and zoning commission, Wayne Schubert, assessor, Keith Morgan, emergency management, Ethan Anderson, who just spoke, and myself. As the department head of the environmental health department, it is my job to steer the committee and to report the committee's findings. So the way I'm gonna approach this, all three applications were exactly the same, with the exception of two of the questions. So there's 44 questions total, and they chose 16, 16 or 17 to work with to come up with their score. We cannot sway from those questions, they choose them, and we grade the ones that they choose. The facility name is, so it's Longview Pork, and then each site is called Richland 10, Richland 28, and Richland 29. The applicant is Scott Henry of Longview Pork, they live in Story County. And the contact person is Brian Rittlin of Pinnacle, which is an environmental consulting group. Do I have that right, Rick? Wow, how does that feel goodness? I just wanted to talk briefly about what we now have in Story County. This data is from DNR. So the, wow, okay, so the green triangles are CAFOs, combining animal feeding operations, and the circles are the open feedlots, okay? So it shows 19 feedlots in Story County and 49 CAFOs, which require manure management plans. So all 49 of those are not necessarily huge ones that require master matrix, but they're the, between the 500 and above animal units are on that. So there's a lot more smaller farming operations than this. So 13 of those triangles have 1,000 animal units or more. And actually, I was talking to DNR this morning, and 36 then are less than 1,000 out of those spots on the map. And then this is just a screenshot from DNR's Facility Explorer, and as you can see, so Story County is the middle bottom there, and you can see our density compared to Boone County to our west, Marshall to our east, and then Harden and Hamilton to the north, which have a lot greater confinement densities. So as I was saying, these three facilities, these three applications are nearly identical. Each facility is proposing 5,000 finished market hogs with two buildings per site with deep manure pits under the buildings. So 5,000 head times the factor is .4 equals 2,000 animal unit capacity, which puts them into this category for the review. So, let's see, so 5,000 actually, so that's 5,000 year rounds, so that's actually two harvests, so two rounds of 5,000 pits. So this is just for reference points. So Richland 10 is the northmost star, and it is three and a half miles south of McCallsburg, and two and a quarter miles north of Furnell, which is an unincorporated town. The other two, 28, is one and a quarter miles north northeast of Nevada, and then Richland 29 is about a mile and a half straight north of the city limits. This is hard to see, I apologize. I would've made those easier. But ever since the county did the water assessment study, watershed assessment study, we've been trying to focus in more on HUH-12s, which are just unions of watersheds. So strangely, each of these are in different HUH-12s. So that top star, so Richland 10 is going in where there's actually one, two, three, four, actually three existing sites, 1,100, 996, and 1,600 animal units capacity. So we've already got a lot of activity for livestock in that particular HUH-12. And then West Indian Creek, they're going in, so that would be Richland 29, one, two, three already existing there, so it's the Causers, Chemlins, H2K. And so about 800, 2,700, and 1,800 animal units already being raised in that HUH. And then going over to the East Indian Creek HUH, that does not have any in it yet, so this will be the first animals confinement in that particular one. All three of these HUHs drain into the, eventually tie up together into the Indian Creek watershed, and then Indian Creek meets up with Story, or with the Skunk River down in Jasper County. So this is a close up of Richland 10. Arbitrarily, there's a one mile and two mile ring radius there, the star shows where the exact, where the facility is gonna be. Those filled in shaded areas are the manure management, or manure application sites,
Margaret, can you help me with that a little bit? When you said those filled in, for like I'm seeing Causers on the left-hand side of the screen, that is their application site?
That's correct, yes, yes. So they, every four years they have to, well, every year they update, but every four years they have to actually submit a map and show us exactly where they plan to put their manure.
I just wanted to make sure, the little blue dots, yeah?
Okay, and then, yes, so the dots, blue and green dots are wells. The green ones are geothermal, and the blue ones are water wells. Some might be in use, some might not. What else? Oh, the green are the drainage district tiles. So I tried to show the water features here, so the tiles, the wells, and then where the manure is actually gonna be placed, is in those shaded areas. So Longview is mostly just right there by them, and then the other facilities take up the rest. Okay, so this is a Pinnacle document, this was submitted with the application. This is, generally speaking, what the site will look like. The two buildings are in green, the truck turnaround is the hatch mark, and then they will come and go ex- egress from the gravel road, which is 100 and, no, 700, no, 170, 170, and then up the north-south is S27. They will not be accessing from the pavement, as our engineer is in agreement with that, that it's better if they go to 170 if that's valid. Okay, so we're gonna start talking about the setbacks. I'm just gonna list off the setbacks, I'm not gonna go through all the footage, because I checked the maps, and they are accurate, the footage that they claimed, it is accurate. So to be able to put confinement in a spot, you have to meet a setback. To get points for the master matrix, you have to exceed that setback by certain amounts. And then there's ranges, and then you get points according. So this one, so the top arrow, the yellow arrow, is the closest residence, and the blue one is the closest water source. So the things they chose to ask for points for, and the committee agreed that they earned those points, was for residence, of abuse area, school, church, business, closest water source, critical public area, and drainage wells slash spink holes, facility with manure management plans, and the high-quality water. So they met all of these setbacks, plus the addition required to get the points. And then moving on, and again, I'm just gonna talk about the setbacks for now, and then we'll do the rest in a few minutes here. So I did these two together because they're so close. So section, again, Richland 28 is on the east, Richland 29 is on the west. And then they met all of those same setbacks that I just read off, with the exception of Richland 29, because they didn't have that full amount of setback, additional setback from the residence. So the other question that they added in to make up for those points was setback for their well. So the water for all three will come from drilled wells, and in that particular site, they will have to double the setback for the well to the pits in order to get those additional points. And this is what 28 looks like, so it's on the corner there, 210. And so the green again is the buildings, the truck turnaround is the hatch mark to the east, and the well then will be on the southeast corner there. This again is 28, so the closest water is shown there to the southwest, and the closest house is straight north. And this is 29, again, same setup, the green are the buildings, the well is shown further away from that pit there, and then the hatch mark is the truck turnaround here. Closest house is straight north, all three, yeah, straight north houses that are closest. And then to the west is the closest grid of water body. Okay, we talked about how we scored this earlier and we visited a long time over this and reiterate that all three proposed CAFOs would get the points for this. Liquid manure storage structure is covered. The pit is first put in and then the pigs are over top of the pit and the building and roof are over that. Going by what the regulations require, we are giving them full points for having a covered manure pit structure. And that just kinda talked about, this is straight out of the application. They talked about the design, operation, and maintenance, although Kyle doesn't need that because it declares it as a covered structure if it indeed is the pit underneath the building. We talked about question seventeen also. Proposed manure storage structure is formed. So these are formed in place and they have a design, operation, and maintenance plan for it. So again, all three got the full points for that question. This is from the application and it has all three things, the, and operation, maintenance, and design. Question twenty, Ethan talked about the history of it. At first we thought, well, if you have never done this before, how can you have a history and a history of violations? But again, the attorneys advised us that, yes, they get points for this because they have no history whatsoever. So again, full points for question number twenty. That brings us to the table that summarizes everything and we agree with the points that were requested across the board. So, four hundred and ninety-five for Richland ten, four hundred and ninety-five for Richland twenty-eight, and four hundred and seventy for Richland twenty-nine. Scoring, a passing score is four hundred and forty. The board of supervisors shall include with the adopted recommendation a copy of the master matrix analysis. The board's adopted recommendations submitted to DNR may be based on the master matrix or comments received by the board. I think that's very important. The comments, especially in this situation, are very important. The adopted recommendations shall include the specific reasons and any supporting documentation for the decision to recommend approval or disapproval of the application. And if you have additional comments that you would like to submit and write in, please submit them to my office, Environmental Health Department, by December thirteenth. Everything that we turn in is due to DNR by December seventeenth. Thank you, I appreciate the comment today.
Margaret, tell us about the difference between the four hundred and ninety-five and the four hundred and seventy on the two. What's, what's the difference? You mentioned that it was adding the setback.
The difference, okay, the difference, I, sorry. The difference is that in Richland twenty-nine, the setback to the closest house is not the full amount of the additional setback. It's a shorter distance, so they only got forty, forty-five points for that. And then for the well, it's not drilled yet. They'll have to drill a well and instead of a hundred, they're gonna go two hundred and if it's a shallow well, it's gonna have to be four hundred, the setback from the pit.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Margaret or Ethan before we hear from the applicant?
You've done a fine job of answering for reference material in regards to details and how and whatnot, and I think we all saw that here. Can you tell me in your time or to your knowledge in the county, where are these sites as they exist? How are they doing collectively? I mean, are we having violations being generated by our AFOs, our CAFOs?
I do get calls about odor in the fall when land application is most commonly occurring. I do get some calls, a few calls about dead animals being stored in the front, they haven't been picked up quickly enough. Very exciting to see that. And then just this year, I've received a few calls on violations or, wondering if they're violations for people land applying on frozen soil. And one, one CAFO had to be a commission to land apply, or a variance to land apply. And what has happened is because the crops came out so late and then the ground started freezing, there's a very small window of opportunity to get the manure on the land. And so, yes, some of these folks were not injecting or not being, they were land applying. Not a good thing, not a good thing. But also there's smaller folks that don't have manure management plans to do it and they don't get a variance and then those that are not large can also do it. So those are the typical complaints, Marty. I get very good questions, not over the limits.
Violation, I mean, I get the complaint site, but I guess we tend, we, as an actionable thing, is that rise to the level of violation. Anything you need to tell us.
Okay, other questions, Marty? Laura's questions or comments before we get in.
Done, right now, thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, guys. So now I would ask for representatives from the applicant to come up and address us.
Afternoon. Good afternoon.
Thank you, supervisors. So, my name is Scott Henry and I'm here on behalf of Longview Court and so I'd like to submit the following statement. I do have a written copy that I'll leave with you afterwards as well. Our family operates a multi-generation family farm north of Nevada and ever since my great-grandma and grandpa Long started the farm, we've always been looking for ways to build a business that gives us the opportunity for future generations to come back to the farm and to this community. This project, we believe, gives us that opportunity as both my youngest brother, who's here with us today, and I have returned to the family farm on a full-time basis and my other brother, Kyle, is looking for ways to get involved as well. The three of us are the owners and the applicants collectively through Longview. We know that there are many opinions and emotions surrounding livestock production and unfortunately throughout this process, we've heard rumors, rumors, false statements, and absurd claims that no doubt have increased people's level of concern and created fear that we feel is misplaced. After careful research and much consideration, we are confident that these sites will have minimal impact, if any, to those in close proximity, which includes my parents' house, my brother's house, my own home, which was recently built, and our business headquarters. People need to know that we are committed to doing many things that reduce the risk of impacting quality of life for those around the facilities, which include, at the very beginning of this process, identifying sites that don't just meet the setback requirements, they exceed them. I think that's one point that we definitely want to stress is that the matrix is not a minimum. The minimum is the DNR placement. The matrix has been adopted by the county to encourage livestock producers to, to go above and beyond and so that is why we use that as a guiding principle in placing these sites. We also took into consideration prevailing winds in Iowa, using some of the wind modeling technology available from Iowa State University and found out that prevailing winds for these locations are out of the southwest. And so we looked to place the sites where we had at least one mile or close to one mile of separation to any residence or residence property owner to the northeast of these proposed locations. We reached out to the neighbors within one mile of each site to make sure that we've given them an opportunity to ask us questions directly, concerning concerns that we may have, hoping to encourage dialogue in face-to-face manner. We plan to plant trees at each site, not only to help with appearance, but also odor management and have looked into the research that supports that from Iowa State University. We're also looking at implementing new technologies on the market such as electrostatic fencing, pit additives, in-barn infrastructure, and others that give us confidence that we can manage these facilities well with very minimal impact to surrounding neighbors. In addition, when, when we look at our farm, our family farm, we think that combining manure from these facilities along with the other conservation practices that we already utilize, such as cover crops, we actually are creating a more sustainable and organic production system that allows us to be less reliant on synthetic fertilizers and excites us for the, the future of our industry as we look to continue to reduce potential impact from farming operations. And lastly, we know that we'll never be able to convince everyone who has an opinion on this issue and that's fine, that's okay, we will understand that, but what we want people to know and you as, as a board supervisor to know is that we will be living and working within close proximity to these sites on a daily basis. So our interests and concerns are very much aligned with our neighbors when it comes to wanting to make sure that these sites are well managed and taken care of in order to have minimal impact. If given the chance, we're committed to making that a reality and, and that is a commitment that we gladly and very firmly make as a family. Thank you for your time and consideration today and, and throughout this whole process to, to everybody involved, Margaret and, and other folks.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Henry?
Go ahead.
Okay, so you said that you reached out to neighbors within a mile. Can you kind of give me an idea about the conversations, the reach out, how that went?
Yeah, it went surprisingly better than we anticipated. We knew that we would run into some feedback, however, most of the folks that we were able to speak to face-to-face, some of it ended up being over the phone and some when we stopped by multiple times, just weren't there and we looked for contact and wanted to reach out. But of the, the fifty or so conversations that we've had directly to us, there is not, the questions have been around how are we going to manage these sites well. They understand and, as you've seen today, very well understand the process and have asked that, that you share with them. And so for the most part, we were surprised at the lack of pushback that we received. We also did receive requests for people interested in, in helping us work in the facilities as well as potentially helping us even apply the manure.
Five thousand per site sounds like a lot. So what, what exactly does that require from the manure standard?
Right, so five thousand, what we were permitting, the actual, so that would be the maximum, the actual size of, of the facilities or the site will be determined based upon the paid companies that we would choose to work with. And so, answer is still somewhat in the air. Directly answer your question, the industry standards that we are going off of is on a daily chore basis, one hour per barn and so we have two barns on site, two hours per day and then when you get into the timing of bringing pigs in and out of the facility or when they're young and you're dealing with vaccinations and other things, that, 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 that time period per day may increase.
So, you're a baker? Or, were a baker?
No, I am farmer.
Oh, you're a farmer? Okay, full time. So, you guys are the ones who are gonna be doing a lot of the work.
Yeah, it is our intention to manage the facilities. My brothers, my brothers and I, we may have to supplement some of our time with additional labor, but our intention is to manage this.
I'm sorry, I forgot your, your, sorry, thank you.
That all?
Yeah.
Okay, Marty, questions, comments?
As it's articulated here in the community of Nevada, this is really the Nevada conversation, one of the concerns that people that are your friends, are your neighbors, people that wave to you like you, wanna know with all the acres as to why you chose the sites you did. You, you alluded to some of that, can you bring us home as to why we see stars on the map?
Yeah, so the first and foremost, we took that into account in signing them and placing them in, in areas that we feel confident have the, the least potential to have any impact, which takes some time, basically separation of distance, or separation distance to neighbors and prevailing winds. After that, then we looked at, from a farming operations standpoint, where can that manure produced by these sites? Cause that is one of the reasons we're doing this is we're seeking an alternative organic fertilizer source. Where can these sites best be placed in ways that we could then access ground that we own and are family on with that manure? So, when we put all of that in, these sites were a foreigner with the best and the most, most well-placed from both the environmental and neighborhood impact standpoint as well as to operational efficiency.
Having read from the Iowa State site and, and other places that injected manure has very good soil adherence and takeout, but we all know here in Nevada that this north of the tracks runs, water moves, rain events, can you talk a little of the science of how you have confidence of saying where you propose to inject will stay where you book or, or placing it?
Yeah, actually, that's one of the things that excites us about the project. Manure in its home form, actually a more stable form fertilizer than the commercial or synthetic fertilizers that, that we commonly use in agriculture. And so, we believe from, from the research that we have done, that by using more organic fertilizer and less synthetic fertilizer, it's actually less likely, once we're able to apply manure, more likely.
As Margaret articulated, in an emergency, you have the ability to land apply. Are you constructing facilities and that would be a very last resort, if at all?
Correct, correct. The, I don't have the, the numbers in front of me, but the actual capacity of the pits that would be, which is what the form storage is, there's, there's actually capacity for more than one year's worth of production. I don't know if that's a hundred and fifty percent, roughly a year and a half would have been what we've taken into consideration. In order to make that the very last option that we would have to do when we land apply, we plan to manage them well and, and utilize our existing farming operations, some of the, the tools that we have available to us with seed corn production and being able to harvest higher moisture corn early, so expand that application window each fall that, that hopefully we don't run into that situation.
One of the things we've also seen here in Nevada in regards to, we're gonna go really close to Nevada and we're going on the top side of it as you have drawn your maps and that causes some unease. I find myself, my mailbox is right across the road from a parcel that has also no manure management plan and so far, so good. I would just say on behalf of what I've heard, listened to, and the outreach is the fact that you do a wonderful job, you historically have done a great job pro-cropping. Now you're moving into another facet of agriculture. We, I think the hope is that you are as good with it as you are with your soil and that there's no margin for error and I would just, I think people would like to hear you say the words that we will do everything we can, every day we have, to make that in, accomplished.
That is our intention. We have not to repeat verbatim with you, but one of the things that I would share with folks is that the value set and the principles that our farm and our family have lived by, lived by today and will continue to live by give me full confidence in, in committing to the public that we are gonna do the absolute best that we can to manage these facilities in a way that I hope that they are actually surprised at how little they notice them.
I have no more questions, hang on.
Laura's, anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay. So now, we'll move on to the public hearing. So, forty-one people so far have filled out a request to speak. So here's what we're gonna do, so a couple things. One, anybody who has sent us an email, and by us, I mean any of the three of us, I mean Margaret, Jane, anybody who's sent us an email, that will automatically be included in the packet that we submit. You said thirteenth is the deadline, Margaret? We'll submit it on the fourteenth, which is Friday. We have to have it there by Monday. Is that, that, those dates are right? So, at the end of business on the thirteenth, we're gonna take everything that we have and put it together as part of this packet. So here's what I have to date from people who have sent emails. I, I've responded to everybody. It's been a pretty generic response that I've given to everybody, but it's this many that we've received. If you have additional comments, please send them to us and make sure it's included in the packet and we'll make sure they're included in the packet. So, well, here's what I'm gonna ask as we go through this first round, and I said forty-one, first time through, I'm going to ask that you keep your comments to a couple of minutes. I mean, just boil it down. We'll be glad to have you come back up after everybody else has had a chance to go and talk again, but for first time through, please hit your high points and let's move on and let as many people speak as possible. I'll remind you and I'm so appreciative that we really wanna endeavor to be polite and respectful and not disruptive. Okay, so with that, we'll move into the public hearing and the first name I have is Fred Volplin? Fred Volplin? And the first name I have is Fred Volplin? Fred Volplin?
I was told I had to spell it out to get a share.
Oh, okay, yeah. And that's the other thing. If you, if at this point you don't want to speak, please avail yourself of that opportunity, not speak. And please don't come up and just ditto what's been said before you. Next is Dave Struthers. And I should say, as you sit down, please give us your address and name.
Dave Struthers, seven two eight six five Fairland, Thames Street in Collins. Lifelong farmer. My father put up a confinement fairing building in nineteen sixty-nine with a pit under it. Added other facilities in the seventies and in the nineties. We had early two thousands, we added three farms, primarily because dad didn't have to go through a lot of this stuff. June eighteenth, nineteen seventy-nine, when I became acquainted with the Henry family. You wonder why I remember that day. I was a soon-to-be twelve-year-old four-H'er in junior four-H camp over at the Madder Camping Center. Steve Henry, the father of Scott, was my counselor. He was a senior four-H member. And I remembered my twelfth birthday because my folks sent me a birthday card at camp. Knowing the Henry family and their roles in this community, their character speaks for itself. Scott hit on a lot of the points that I was going to make about the family. If you had a family that was a shoddy operator with anything, whether it be their home, their farm, their... The way they took care of their pets, they're going to be a shoddy operator when it comes to a livestock facility. Longview Farms does not meet that. They're actually totally the opposite. They're about as impeccable as you can get. And here I am, a small farmer. I could be like the Ben Franklin store lobbying for Walmart to come in. Because in a way, you could say they're my competition, but they have a right to be here. They do things right. They have all these rules and regulations, this matrix they've met. I have no doubt in my mind they're going to do things right and they're going to make this so it's not noticeable. They talked about prevailing winds. We know that the southwest winds in the summertime is when you'll smell something. And they have virtually no residences downwind from this place. Northeast, everybody talked, Margaret talked about places to the north, directly north or to the west, that the odors are going to be minimal, if anything at all. I spoke at two different forums like this, one for a proposed hog unit, one in Maxwell. I heard statements that any increase will be polluted. There won't be any fish anymore. The city of Maxwell, we won't be able to breathe. None of that has happened and this operation's been operating for several years now. And the family that put that unit up told me that about two years after they've been operating it, that almost every person that spoke in opposition came and apologized for saying anything derogatory about that. A couple of years ago, there was an operation put up about two and a half miles south of me, KFO. There was statements made by opposition groups that the people would be stunk out of the area. There was a house for sale that was relatively new within a half a mile of the south of this operation. They'll never sell that house. Well, that house is sold. There have been three houses built within three quarters of a mile of that KFO in the last four years by people that have no relationship to the operator of that KFO. So if these things are so horrible, these things wouldn't be happening. So basically what I'm going to summarize is you look at the quality and the character of the people. If you had somebody that didn't pay their taxes, that had the junkiest car in town, that didn't give a rip about their community, then I'd be saying, I really look into this really, really hard. But we don't have that Longview Farms since the Henry family.
Thank you. Next I have Diane Rug.
We're going to have to assess the value of manure from Ohio State publication. Good afternoon.
Hi, Diane.
Good afternoon. My name's Diane Rug. I live at one seven three three one six hundred and seventy five. One mile due east of Richland and proposed Saturday. Mike, I don't have...I'm a terrible public speaker, so... The prevailing wind in the summer may be out of the south, but the other forty-nine percent of the time it's out of the west. So that's going to be coming at my house. I know hogs stink. I know manure stinks. I know fumes they emit from the farm are toxic. And I just don't want to be in that lane. And as far as I don't know the Henrys, they, from what I'm hearing, are wonderful, reputable farmers, but they're not going to own these hogs. They're not going to dictate the process of how they're dealt with or the dead animals are dealt with. These are all open questions that haven't been answered. Has food been owned with hogs? What is their record? And how can we be assured that... I can't say that the idea of opening burning of deceased hogs is not going to be acceptable. You know, I, my husband and I work hard. We've had to move to heavy standards that are above and beyond any other place in the state to find a place to build a house. You know, acreage requirements, or it has to be pre-existing. We found it pre-existing. You know, we work to make it a nice home. We know our neighbors. I don't think that the Henrys actually qualify as my neighbors. It's just not welcome in our neighborhood. And we just assume that you deny it and all the Henrys call their applications. There's a tipping point in this saying, we're going to have an entire generation of children that are never going to understand that Iowa didn't smell like that. It's boring. We go north of here, the environment is terrible. If we can't stop this in Story County, where can we drive, you know, who's going to be able to drive? We are a population center. We should have more control and say so for what happens in our family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Kim Stevens.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Kim Stevens. I live at six five two zero seven Indian Creek Trail, south of Nevada, off of this twenty-seventh. I also wanted, said for the record, that I am speaking on behalf of my husband, James Stevens, who grew up here in Nevada and is a nineteen eighty-seven graduate of Nevada High School. My son, Paul Stevens, who graduated from Nevada High School in twenty thirty. And my friend Mindy Buck, who is a Nevada resident and has a master's degree in hydrology. My biggest concern is water quality, specifically my water quality. East Indian Creek runs through my property. We enjoy eating the creek for all sorts of recreational activities, ones that now seem threatened by agricultural pollution. I understand that the manure management plan is supposed to protect us, but a couple of concerns come to mind. First, the plan itself is self-reported with little to no enforcement. We won't know things are broken until we begin to experience problems. My second concern is with the amount of manure that's created each day. Each pig produces, and this is conservatively, nine pounds of waste. This is as reported by the University of Wisconsin Extension Service. I didn't just pull that figure out there. Humans on average produce around one pound of this. With fifteen thousand pigs going just a few miles away from my town, that is the equivalent of moving a hundred and thirty-five thousand people into this area. And all of that waste has to go somewhere and it's going to go on our ground. Now I've heard the Henrys speak to say that they are going to do the right thing. And I believe that they have a right to make their living. I am absolutely pro-business and I am pro-farmer. However, without a clear plan about what they're going to do, because I did not hear a clear plan, and the DNR, which lacks any sort of enforcement tool to make sure that the Henrys are actually doing what they've publicly stated they're going to do today, I am supposed to take this on good faith. I don't. Based on the information provided by my friend Mindy, she studied West Indian Creek. And West Indian Creek is an impaired waterway. With no point sources available to attribute to the pollution in the creek, the source of the E. coli in the creek is from manure application. When I went to bed last night, I received this letter on my pillow from my eleven-year-old son. I would like to read it into the record. Dear government, why are you destroying my creek property with the pollution of thousands of hogs? Does it really benefit our lives? If so, how? Will I really never get to play in my creek again? Never get to chase and catch minnows again? Do I have to start treating my creek as a biohazard? My family and I would wade up and down the creek in the summer. We would laugh and play, splash each other and swim. Will you really take that joy, that happiness, that tradition of playing there away? Why? Sincerely, Paul Stevens, grade five, Nevada Middle School. One final thought. Last night Supervisor Chitty made a comment at the Nevada City Council meeting that there were a lot of out-of-towners in attendance, myself included. I graduated from the Air Force Academy in two thousand and three. And while we were there, we had to learn a lot of quotes by a lot of leaders. One quote that I learned was, "The day your soldiers stop bringing you your problems is the day that you've stopped leaving them." They either lost the confidence that you can help them or have decided you don't care. Either case is a failure of leadership." That was Colin Powell. I think Supervisors, you have to ask us why we were going to the city of Nevada. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next Catherine B. Fromm.
I'm Catherine Fromm. I own forty-five acres in the county. I've spent a lot of time on water quality, as I've stated before. I believe this is a public health issue that involves the citizens in Nevada and possibly the children. We have an increase in asthma in this society. It is quite possible that this particular operation will affect the children in Nevada. So I'm going to just describe a specific situation. We have an increase in eosinophils invading the lungs. This is from pollution in the atmosphere and I know all too well about this. It is a family problem. A drug has been approved and is available for what is called eosinophilic asthma. And that is asthma that is an extreme condition. And we have, you know, ads on television about this problem. The cost of a shot for this problem, who basically will affect children, is ten thousand dollars a shot. The shot has to be administered at what you call a fusion center, which is a place where you compound drugs. And they charge fifteen hundred a shot. Now, obviously, if we have children who have asthma, they won't necessarily have that particular problem. But there is, there is this condition, which is with its refractory to the other medications, that will be the cost, ten thousand dollars a shot. So who pays that? Medicare, insurance? Then insurance goes up. And we are to believe that we should do this so that this family can have a nice family life on a farm. I don't believe that is really appropriate, particularly for facilities which are one mile north of Nevada. I know that, you know, family farms hang on in this society as a great goal. Everybody wants to be supportive. But I believe that some course, we're not talking about the desires of a family or individual. We're talking about the health of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next I have Barbara Kenny.
My concern has been answered.
Thank you, Barbara. Next I have Jessica Fears, Jessica Fears.
Hi, y'all. My name is Jessica Fears. I reside at forty-nine fifteen Schubert Street, West Daines over there. So it seems like I'm kind of a little bit out of the way on this issue, but my parents do still reside in Medford. So I make frequent trips there and see names grad. I've got a lot of friends in Iowa and Nevada. For all that I would like to continue to visit and have our children growing up together and having recreational activities around Nevada. I didn't have a chance to blow it up. This is a picture of me and my grandfather with some of his hogs. And in my mind, this is what a family farm looks like, a family interacting with a farm. Pigs are seeing sunlight. That's something that's probably only going to happen on certain occasions out of Mr. Henry's developments there. For a little bit of background, I am originally from Kentucky and South Carolina, so I'm no stranger to agriculture, particularly swine. My parents chose to move to Iowa in two thousand when my father took a position at Berry Greeley. He's a physician over there. Prior to that, he was a veterinarian. My sister got her master's degree in public health and wellness. She is now envious of my ability to live in Iowa while she was out in Phoenix. I don't understand that one entirely, but... Her husband is from Storm Lake and they are aware of what could be coming down the road. I just have a couple of things I want to bring up here. My biggest concern is the growth of Story County. Rick, you ran on story grows, right? Am I correct there?
Growth of Story County.
Yeah, so we brought in, Burke is expanding and as you all know, anything that manufactures food needs clean water and clean air. It's not just a want, it's a need for them to continue to manufacture and grow and expand. They're going to be bringing more jobs in. We're going to be growing. So we're going to be looking at building homes and smaller families that are going to be employed by Burke are going to be looking for lower income housing that is typically built on the north end of Nevada as opposed to the larger regions to the south. So I just have a couple of quick studies here that I highlighted. A two thousand and one study, National Property Afraison Firm, found that property values around KFOs can decline by anywhere from fifty percent to ninety percent due to diminished marketability, loss of enjoyment, use or exclusivity. And in two thousand and two, a study found that antibiotics in nearly a third of ground and surface water samples taken near hog KFOs, two-thirds of samples in poultry, showed that the manure that looms can leach antibiotic-resistant bacteria and contaminants into the waterways there. And the American Medical Association now opposes the use of antibiotics and farm animals that are not sick. In addition to that, we have nuisance cases that have come up recently in Iowa. Two thousand and two, a nuisance case ordered a court company to pay over a hundred thousand dollars to homeowners when their homes dropped fifty thousand dollars in values after a new KFO was built. The plaintiffs had alleged that the KFO attracted bugs and harmed their physical, emotional health. And I've yet to hear even a possible proposal on Mr. Henry doing anything about the flies and other vermin that it will attract. But I have heard he's interested in taking care of that odor. High nitrate concentrations in drinking water can cause blue baby syndrome. They contribute to developmental defects and bruises in miscarriages in pregnant women. I'm happy to surrender all these studies to you all if you want to go through them yourself. But I think there's a lot of evidence here that this is going to hurt the growth and development of Story County. And I hope that the Supervisors, even if this is a symbolic or non-minding decision, you can at least hold your heads high and say you tried.
Thank you, Jessica. Next is Luke Spence.
Luke, good afternoon. Luke Spence, seven thirty-two J Avenue in Nevada. I'm also on Nevada City Council and I'm speaking on behalf of my son, not necessarily the council. I know City Mayor Morrison is waiting in the wings in the back of the estate one we have local, sitting in the council. The most common response I've received or read from the board of supervisors is that the state law is very clear and that you don't have a legal say and that the current code does not recognize modern concerns to allow criminal control. If you truly want to fix the issues with this process, whether the timeline, the matrix, the county's level of control, you should recommend a disapproval of this proposal. Continuing to recommend approval when you not have acknowledged that the process has many flaws and is outdated only enables a broken system to continue. You have the power to start the process of getting these laws and the matrix fixed today. I ask that you do so by recommending disapproval of the proposed proposal. I have three kids, many of you know. I have three kids, many of you know. On occasion, they may spend more time than they should on an electronic device like an iPad, a video game, something along those lines. If I threaten to take away their time with those electronic devices, if maybe they don't clean their room, or if they don't put away the dishes or feed the dog, the key is not the threat that I made to try to get them to do their chores. The key is the follow-through on my part in actually taking it away when they don't hold up to their end of the deal. I don't think the same goes true here today. As a parent, and my wife grew up in Nevada, we moved here three years ago to come back to Nevada to raise our kids here. I selfishly hope that they all decide to move here in Nevada so that I can be living in the same town as them as I grow older. But the reality is such that sometimes the birds leave the nest and find their own tree to start their own life. What I hope for them is that Nevada and Story County can be a model for what they look for when they choose a community, to raise their family in a community that is safe, clean, with good schools, and leadership that will always advocate for and have a vision for making life better for their town that they choose to live in. You can send a message to our state legislators and the DNR today that the system is broken and needs to be fixed, and Story County will wait until they take action before you go any further improving [inaudible] of Story County today.
Thanks, Luke. Next I have Grant Duel.
Hi, Grant. How are you doing? Name's Grant Duel. Address is 1935 640th Avenue, which puts our residence basically just over the aisle to both sides when you put down. So fun to be giving comments on the record today. We do have concerns about the sites, although we understand the Henrys' desire to continue to improve their family farm and provide a source of income for their family. So not, and also commend them for being the matrix post that they have. Just wanted to make sure we get our concerns on being close to these two sites. We are concerned about the potential for odor share basically straight north, Site 18, northeast of Site 19. So prevailing winds from [inaudible] in our direction. Based on what the Henrys have said about controlling odors, we'd just like to stress that we fully want that to take place, vegetation growth, the tree growth, the things to reduce that odor, because that would be in our direction for a good time of year, most likely the Other concern is about traffic on 640th Avenue. That ground road gets more than its share of traffic, as people who said as of now in Nevada. So we're concerned about the truck traffic on that road. So we're going to do to minimize that truck traffic. There are five residential areas or upon 640th from Site 18. And last, it's the property values. We are within that mile radius of both of these sites, so that is a concern as our desires to sell our property as our kids are growing, probably move, and probably transition to somewhere. So the investment that we have in our property, we'd like to maintain that. So just like for the record, that the Henrys would do their due diligence that maintaining odors may maintain visibility, et cetera, on these two sites. So thank you for your [inaudible].
Yeah, Grant, thank you very much. Linda Merton.
Hi, Grant. Can you speak a little bit louder?
Sure. So if everybody could please speak up, get in, pull the microphone just a little closer, hopefully so people can hear it all the way.
Hello, I'm Linda Merton. I live at 17185 GW Harbor Avenue of Gilt. That's Section 8 Franklin Township. So I live in the township that's directly east of Rich, or west of Rich, excuse me. I have an appreciation for how difficult these meetings are for everybody. It's difficult for the people who are going to have to make a decision based on all the things they have heard. It's difficult for the people who are the applicant, and it's difficult for people who have some concerns, some very big concerns. For those of you who are making the decision, this is your tough day. You will make a decision. You will go on from today to make other decisions on other issues. For people in this room today who have concerns, that would be legitimate concerns, they're going to have a lot of tough days ahead, a lot of tough years. A lot of them are going to say, if this comes to pass, if my worst fears, our worst fears come to pass, what am I going to be able to do? I may have all my money in my land. I may not be able to leave my land. I may not want to leave my land. What health impacts are going to come? What other impacts are going to come? These concerns are real, and they're not going to go away tomorrow after the decision is made. They may just start after the decision's made, and people are going to go through some very, very difficult times, and I think that they're going to be harmed. You've been presented with evidence, and you're going to be presented with more evidence as well as anecdotes. I would really ask that you think about people in terms of the anecdotes, and that you base your decisions on whatever evidence you hear. Now, Ethan, I missed a little bit of his presentation, but here's my understanding of the code. If you folks say yes, the DNR does not rescore the master matrix. That's it. If you say no, but you say you don't change the score, but you say you have concerns, that doesn't change anything either. The concerns will be there. I'm not saying it's not important to address concerns, but they're not going to change what happens. Okay. What you need to do, if you feel that any of the scores, and we have great staff here at the county, I'm not knocking them, but if you feel that there might be any doubt in any of the scores, I'm saying any doubt from what you hear or see, you can take those points away. And then the DNR rescores the master matrix. More expert eyes on the applications and on the process. Now, you need to make that decision based on the rules, based on the statute. But I'm just saying, we said we don't have very much that we can do. That's right. We don't have very much. But that is the one thing that can be done that now, through the end result of these applications, that could make a difference. And if you feel that that is the way to go, you see the evidence that maybe there's something that you have some doubt about, you need to take those points away today. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next I have Deborah Thompson.
Good morning.
Good afternoon, Linda.
Yeah, I'm just trying to spell it. Deborah Thompson, I live at 16125 670th Avenue in Paulsbury. We are as approached by one mile northeast of the Richmond Towne proposal site. As he stated, that winds come in my direction. I currently live with a CAFO a half mile directly north of us. Now, even taking in consideration of prevailing winds, we smell that. I no longer leave home and leave my windows open because I come home to a house that smells completely by Cognor. I no longer hang my clothes out to dry because I've come home and had to re-wash everything. We hear them fighting. I would hope that I would not hear the ones that are a mile away, but we do hear them. We do not plan family get-togethers at our home anymore. We kind of wing everything because we had to cancel because of the smell. I don't want my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren in that stench. My great-granddaughter is fifth generation going to school here in Nevada. They live here. My son lives here. My son lives in the Vincent addition on the north side of town. These two proposed sites are just a shade over a mile. My grandson is supremi, he has health issues. I look at the things that are going into the air and how that might affect him. I have asthma, which has worsened over the years, and I can't prove it, but I suspect it's because of the emissions from my three thousand neighbors to the north. I would urge the board to consider the long-ranging health concerns for the citizens of Nevada as well as those of us who are close to the existing sites. And I would ask you to join us in saying, no more CAFOs. We need, they come, there comes a time when the good of the majority outweighs the needs and wants of the minority. And good, if good intentions were money, we'd all be rich. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Susie Pedro.
Susie Pedro, Ames, Iowa. The master matrix was drafted over a decade and a half ago. We know that it has now failed Iowans. It fails to adequately protect the rights of all Iowans. It fails to protect our health, our land values, our air quality and our water. The master matrix is a scoring system, as you heard. It has forty-four questions. And though a perfect score would result in eight hundred and eighty points, only four hundred and forty points are needed to get a passing grade. As an educator, I have to ask, and I'm serious, since when is fifty percent a passing grade? Adding insult to injury, the applicants get to choose which questions to answer. And when they gather their minimum required points, they are not required to answer any further questions. So take note, many, many of the questions on that matrix are extremely easy in order to score those minimum points. However, questions on the matrix which impact your health and mine, the health of our children and our elderly are most never answered. For instance, questions regarding air quality monitoring, or installation and maintenance of filters to reduce odors, or demonstrating community support, or implementing a worker's safety and protection plan, or adopting an approved comprehensive nutrient management plan. Also, the current matrix, as you know, has a glaring omission. It does not have a question requesting that the applicant have a risk management plan. So what is the plan when there's a manure spill? Our water is polluted and our fish are killed. Look at the, I have a map of Story County, but we can't project it. So here's a map of Iowa, a CAFO map. We already have in Story County thirty-four medium and large CAFOs. This number does not include the smaller confinement facilities which dot Iowa and dot Story County. They have few regulations and don't have to file applications, so the DNR is not even able to accurately count their numbers. This matrix, this past failed test, has most definitely failed Iowans, and it fails our Story County residents. The current system is weighed heavily in favor of the livestock industry, not in supporting the health and quality of life of our residents. Adding to this offensive unjust process, the county has only thirty days to review applications, call for a public hearing, conduct the hearing, and make work recommendations to the DNR whether or not to approve that matrix. Supervisors say their hands are tired. Tired, tied, probably tired. And there's nothing they can do, but actually, there are a number of things that they can do. Number one, they can deny the applications based on the incomplete or vague answers submitted on the matrix, and based on the solid concerns voiced by Story County residents here today in those emails. Because these additional CAFOs are not in the best interest of the community that the supervisors were elected to serve. Two, they can take points off the submitted matrix and give it a failing grade, which would flag the application to the DNR. Three, they could ask the Henrys to withdraw their proposals and go back to being a family farm as opposed to industrial farming. And four, they could decide to delay their decision today while they further consider the citizen's concerns. Here's the real issue. We in Story County, as do all Iowans, have the right to breathe clean air, to drink clean water, to recreate in uncontaminated waters. We have the right to protect our property values and our health, to enjoy quality of life. This is the job of government. It's your job.
Thank you, Susie.
Thank you.
Next I have Jim Freever.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Hi. I'm Jim Freever. I live in Nevada at 539 Oak Lane. I just come back from Florida for a few days for business, but I have this hearing and I'd love to come with, because I feel very strongly about it. I've known all first of all, I've been in Nevada since 1964 and been associated with first fund management. And I've had the opportunity to manage a lot of farms over north central Iowa, and to be involved with agriculture a lot of different directions. And I will stand here and I'll confidently say that there isn't a better farming operation in Iowa than what Longview Farm and Henry. And I say that from a management standpoint and the detail that they do. When Scott talked about what he was going to do, they will do it too. And you don't have to worry about dead things laying out on the side of the road. You don't see that in this place. They're going to take care of it. As far as the smell, I've been raised on a livestock farm, and yeah, you've had smell of livestock, especially in the old days. And you know, you had the feedlots and everything, and the water runs off, it goes down the creek. And all that water, you don't contain it. Here, we've got a new system now that we've been using in recent years, so much better. It's confinement, you're controlling your manure. Dermot Hayes over at Ohio State, he's one of our leading professors over there, I've heard him say a number of times, if there's ever a place to raise livestock that's here in Iowa where we can use the manure, they are banned now. And what better way you can do that? And so we have this opportunity here, yeah, they want to expand. I know right where they're putting this. Frankly, I don't have a worry at all about smell from that, because the way they will do things. But I will also say that I've been involved with a number of confinement facilities, and some of them changed, the technology is a lot better now than what we used to have. But I know I have one down by Collins, right next to a farm that I have, and there's absolutely no smell from that. Been around there when they're even taking out the manure out and applying it on the fields. And they do it so well, it's, you've got to give people credit. You know, and I hear a lot of fear, and I'm sorry that it's there, but I don't think they have to worry about it. And so I support it a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next I have Jack Trober. Hi, Jack.
Good day. The climate for change is upon us now. What will you do about it? Story County residents are being told that they must capitulate, accommodate- Story County residents are being told that they must capitulate, accommodate, tolerate another assault on their air, water, land, and lives as yet another CAFO imprisoning 15,000 living, breathing, intelligent animals is built. No one likes to be told what to do and how to do it. I know. But, so here it is, a point I bring. No, thou shalt not condone the construction of another hog factory in Story County. And yes, I can hear those who want to build a CAFO, but I have a right to make a living however I choose and besides, it's all legal. No, no you do not. Especially when your choice profoundly affects people and the animals involved. And it's besides, just because it's legal. Because Big Day, Big Egg, Alec, and the Farm Bureau wrote and passed the laws that make it so. Of course it's legal. My wife's 150-acre family farm has been the place for raising pigs the free-range way for a long time. So I know it is possible to do so profitably. Because Iowa's powers that be have not said no to Big Egg, Big Day, and Big Pork for more than 35 years. Iowa is now just a giant 56,000-square-mile hog manure sewer. As county supervisors, you may not have the authority to stop this CAFO here and now today. You can initiate change. The very least, all three of you can do today is say, "No, you will not build a confinement for 15,000 hogs." Complacency is complicity. You wouldn't do it to your family pet. Why would it take us?
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Next, I have Mark Edwards. He didn't quote entre manure this time.
My name is Mark Edwards and I live in Boone County, 1165 216th Lane. And I've retired from the DNR after 30 years and I've spent considerable amount of time going into this issue. And the one issue that I'd like to bring up today, and Jack covered this from a particular angle of the level, but when I look at the larger context, what I've learned about where I live, I live in a state where 98% is big given agricultural roads and cities. I live in a state that 2/3 of the state is covered only two species. If you understand any biology whatsoever, you know that can't support any other species. So we can continue going down this road and even whether you're talking about building housing, as you were in the previous issue, or you're talking about CAFOs, you have to put that into some kind of context. And the context is we can't keep doing what we're doing. And right now, we're competing for the bottom of the United States with worse water, erosion, we could go on and on, air, things are just getting worse and worse. So at some point, we're going to have to turn around and go a little different way.
Thank you. Next, I have Tazda Barfoot, maybe?
Is that how you pronounce your name? Tazida Barfoot. I go by Sid for those who know me. I address this worry for a foreign friend on the street in Ames. I don't buy me that phrase with antibiotics. It's not because I'm against eating animals. I'm not, that's really a lot, but most animals do, they eat each other. I do it because I understand biology. And the way I understand it is this still the industry standard here in the United States to be vulnerable antibiotics to our livestock. That is a recipe for antibiotic-resistant bacteria. It's not a matter of if these livestock will be colonized with antibiotic-resistant bacteria, it's when. So if you look at the mainline of meat in our grocery store, it is a biohazard. I choose not to bring that biohazard into my household. Now, there are people who live near CAFOs who don't get the habit of those. These bacteria spread through the water, through contact with people who work in CAFOs. And we've had something, these spread through the end. So even if you take care of the odor issue, your post-site is still a public health hazard. Now, I want to speak a minute about economics. Pork is one of the most vertically integrated industries in agriculture. You will not own your pigs. From what I've heard from you and people who know you, you want to do the right thing. My question is, are they going to pay you enough for a head of hog for you to do the right thing? Are you going to be financially able to tell them to let them know? You can't, we can't bring our facilities to capacity or beyond because we cannot responsibly manage the manure that exists. Finally, I want to say that here in Iowa, we have the best land in the world. We grow the corn, let pigs eat here. Meat consumption in the United States is declining. I think it's in large part because we here in the United States see the real impact of industrial beef farming. And we're making our consumer choices as a result. Demand on the market for pork is going up because of other countries, other countries want our cheap meat. And that low price in meat being paid for by externalities to our communities. We, but we as citizens of the best farm land in the world, we have the brokerage Darfica and saying, "No." If we're going to feed the world the meat that you want to eat, we're going to do it the right way. So with that, I encourage you, and the board supervisors, to do all you can to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Harris is who I have next.
Good afternoon.
Mark?
My name's Mark Harris. I live at 6037199th Street in North Portentia. And I was here four and a half years ago and again standing in opposition to no sightings of the visitors or the children. I have to say that living in the south of the loop, I haven't noticed that much smell, but I'm also directly south and that is not the development. I've arrived across the road 200 feet from my house, there's 80 acres that he does farm as a rental and his part is in rural management. And situations beyond his control. I've witnessed a county, Margaret called DNR, three years ago this month when the door was spread on the ground in December and then we had that torrential rain that happened in that December. And it essentially flooded Lake on the south side of 2909th Street on West Dade Creek. And I was concerned because right after the rural application, huge amount of water, standing water, while the creek drain ran through the city of Nevada. And this is one of my issues that I sat here and talked about is that the main waterway through the city of Nevada is West Dade Creek. And I was concerned with the application of manure in fields in that drainage area and the water quality of the city of Nevada. I object mostly to CAFOs in large part because of the manure issue. I don't believe it's, manure is kind of not fully stating what we're actually talking about. Bringing this, you can see it's not just the waste product of pigs, it's the antibiotics, antifungus, the hormone possibilities, chemicals for cleaning, all these kind of things. So in a sense, saying manure is not really acknowledging what things can be done. Four and a half years ago, I submitted this study from the Veterans Hospital in Iowa City that they did in 1914, where they studied patients coming in with bacteria, you know, resistant bacteria. And their study showed that people working and living within a mile of a CAFO had almost three times the average infections that were bacteria living in their bodies than the standard in the population. So we know, again, that this bacteria is in a higher population than it has in us. I also object because I believe in science and I believe in evolution and I believe that these cesspits are evolutionary cesspools. We are creating conditions where bacteria and other organisms have to learn to adapt. And over time, we found that this resistance happens. I believe that as we spread this on the soil, we are creating conditions that also require life to adapt. The soil, as the previous person mentioned, is some of the best in the world, is the best in the world because it's developed over successive glaciers came through nearly 8,000 to 10,000 years ago. It's taken that long to develop. It's developed because of the life in the soil. It isn't sterile, it's full of life. And that life is what gives us life. We are part of the soil. We know now that we have, the biome of our intestines comes from the earth that we build. And what are we doing to the earth that we receive this biome? Every living creature in our environment receives the same kind of inoculation from the earth to allow them to live. And we are creating conditions we don't know what we're doing. I also believe that we are an economic risk, as the previous person said. If you're following the news in the society industry, you know what's happening in Asia, prostitution with the African swine fever situation here. They are really freaking out. The primary news, and I don't know, maybe you're reading the same thing, but I presume the primary news on what's happening in the United States is that we're gearing up for the eventual reality that this might hit us. We all know what happened with the bird flu situation that ran through Iowa. What are we going to do if the African swine flu gets high? Are we prepared to deal with the 20 million-plus CAFOs that are coming? What I fear in this environment is that we ignore the science. We seem to be ignoring the science of climate change, the science of the health departments that are telling us that bacteria resistance is not a positive thing for us. We are in the environmental, regulatory situation where the water regulations are being proposed to be decimated. So what we have right now, even though we have reverse water systems in the United States, it may even get worse as we have the less regulation. Climate change is real. We can't predict exactly how it's going to affect Iowa, but we know it's changing. And one of the largest challenges to environmental change or climate change is our farming practices. CAFO farming contributes to the climate change issues. The fact that we're not reducing the amount of carbon that's in the soil, not increasing the amount of carbon in the soil is also an issue that's creating a lot of the climate issues that we're having. And the industry itself is totally dependent on fossil fuels. Can you imagine how many miles of truck miles and tractor miles it takes to move the manure and the 42 million hogs that go to slaughter every year in this state? It's totally dependent on fossil fuels. I know that what I say here is not going to change anybody's mind. What I hope is people start researching the science that I have. What I hope is that Iowa creates for the public interest a clearinghouse of information related to this. I hope that we have research related to public impact that's available easily. I hope we have science in the public interest and not just the interest of the economics of CAFOs. I ask for a statewide auditorium on citing more CAFOs. At 42 million-plus pigs going to market, we are actually setting ourselves up for an economic risk, whether it's through disease or politics or training and side work of applicants. I believe we need a new application process that's based on current evidence and that requires more evidence to pass. Thank you.
Next is Cheryl Benson.
Cheryl? Cheryl Benson, 2006 Burnett Avenue in Ames, Iowa. Several friends in for the head of the committee in Nevada. Yeah, okay. And up until recently, a family member who lived all of her community was in Nevada, so ex-homies of this community. As a citizen of this county, I appreciate what the applicant said earlier about their intentions with this application. I am a part of the family business, so appreciate the value of that. I am also, earlier in my life, married and she was having this arm that had those crops and hogs. So that's my context I'm coming from. That being said, I really have some real serious concerns about this application. There are 44 questions, as you know, only 16 were answered. So that's a lot of unanswered questions. My understanding, somebody heard this morning, it says there were points given for the intent to put out the well. I have no reason to believe that it won't be built, but that's interesting. Because I've watched the comments about the flawed matrix, that it really is a pretty shaky document, legal, you know, combined, but pretty shaky document for making a decision that's this huge for everybody involved. I don't know the applicants, but I know decently believe that there's any lack of integrity, that the operation that they're currently running is well-done, professional, and that the intention to do what they have applied to do is well-intentioned. I just don't think that Mother Nature, with the wind, the air, the odors, whatever else is carried on the air, the water quality, I just don't think that however well-intentioned we are with this level of animals, hogs, can be mitigated. They're just real huge considerations. So I'm asking each of you as commissioners to do what you know you can do, if you're pointed out by others, to take a look at this application, not allow it to go forward in the present form. And, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Barb Willock. Okay. And Barb, your emails will be included as it goes forward. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, so Susan Franzen is next. Next is Brenda Breach. Good afternoon, Brenda.
Good afternoon. Hi. Thank you. I'm Brenda Breach, 29514 US Highway 69. I'm going to tell you a story, I'm going to do some statistics, and I'm going to ask some things. So the story is that we have our younger son that had a few asthma attacks. And I'm just curious in here if anybody deals with... And I'm just curious in here if anybody deals with caretaking of people who have asthma, breathing problems of any sort. Well, when you're the parent of a seven-year-old and they have an asthma attack, and you're up every two hours giving them a breathing treatment, trying to keep them awake, trying to stay awake on a Friday. So imagine that. And just take a deep breath right now and think about that. It's easy for us, who don't have asthma, to take a deep breath. It's pretty basic, taking a deep breath. And that's what we need to do, is we need to protect our kids. There really is no one else to protect them. We need to do that. Well, they have done studies on rural children, children growing into school in Iowa, in rural areas. And it was quite interesting, it's not just one study, it's two or more. And what they found is that when you look at the average asthma rate, which this was in two thousand six, since two thousand five, since then, I'm sure the asthma rate has gone up, I haven't heard that, I couldn't find that statistic, but they did a study. And if a child goes to a rural school within ten miles of concentrating hog operation, their risk of asthma almost doubles. Now, I didn't say it goes up like fifty percent, it almost doubles. That's not okay. If a child lives, well, I should say, if a child goes to rural school within a half-mile of concentrating, concentrated animal feeding, it's almost four times, four times, four times the rate. We're talking about asthma here. And the thing about asthma that I didn't realize until I had a child with asthma is the treatments are only treatments, they get you through, but the treatments have their own very severe side effects. One of them is steroids. You don't stay on steroids very long, it's not that good for you. The other medications, we thought, okay, great, here are the medications. Well, guess what? The doctor says, well, we don't want to use these unless we have to because of the side We don't need any more children with asthma. To me, this is the bottom line. If we can't protect our kids, what are we doing? What are we doing? And then there's, of course, there's the antibiotics in the feed. And if you have a child who lives on the farm where antibiotics are in the feed for the hogs, it's nine times the chance to have asthma. So something's wrong with this system. I grew up on a farm, we had hogs. My brother got out of it because he couldn't make any money when the whole system changed. And the one thing that I want to also give you is, I'm a member of Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement, we have a bunch of petitions here. I hope that's catchable. And I think there's about five hundred subpoenas on here. And this is the information I just shared. I don't really care about the legal part. You know why? It's a moral issue when you can't protect your children. When we are purposely allowing things to be put in place that put our children at such risk for a life-altering condition. That's a moral issue. And it's time we took the moral ground and did the right thing. So that's why I'm asking supervisors to do, to recommend no on these applications. The other thing is, I think all of us need to think about how elections matter. I ran for state representative, I was all ready to go and work for the health of our communities. And one of those things that we need to do is strengthen the master matrix so we don't put the board of supervisors in this intolerable situation, so we get local control back and we use science. We use science to determine things. Well, that didn't work out. So I want you to think about who's in the office now, and you need to put the pressure on them. Because I myself have not been able to do that, but if enough people talk to our elected representatives, we can impress upon them what we want, and we need to do that. And the last thing is, I heard a couple weeks ago that Paul Willis, who runs Nyman Ranch and produces a very premium pork product, top dollar, is looking for partners. Think about it. Thank you.
Hi, Pat. Thanks for the pronunciation. Pat's a lot simpler. Thank you for your time this afternoon. I will, um, there's a lot to say, and this is a pretty vast topic.
Oh, give us your address, Pat.
Oh, excuse me, one-nine-seven-seven-five-six-hundredth Avenue, Knopf Township, Nevada, Iowa.
I have a question, were you over there as media too?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, you were occasional.
And my comments are going to be neutral and to the point of conservation.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to be clear.
Well, with that, let's just start with the conservation pledge. I give my pledges as an American citizen to faithfully defend from waste the natural resources of my country, its soil and minerals, its forests, water, and wildlife. The conservation pledge was convened in nineteen oh two by President Teddy Roosevelt. It was determined that the resources that seemed to be endless are going on and on forever. By nineteen oh two, they could see some failings in that. In Iowa, one of the species that was becoming more and more rare, that was essentially wiped out of our interior waters, were the river otters. By nineteen twenty-nine, the last sighting was east of the, or west of the Mississippi, Woodbury County. We have grown as an agricultural state, we have reached the precipice. We have a master matrix whose authors, and I will quote David Johnson, the independent San Francisco machine, who was one of the twelve, there were six Republicans, six Democrats, they got together, they created the master matrix. He has vowed that it should be rendered obsolete and replaced. Now, that is a quote from David Johnson. So this is the legal matrix that we're working with. And I'm going to try to bring this back around to where we have a family, obviously with impeccable farming standards, and you're to be commended. You're buying into a system that is essentially the current system. I don't know where this is going, but I think when we have a situation where there's a hypoxic zone in the Gulf of Mexico that is not diminishing, we have voluntary mechanisms, we have things, and each year, the hypoxic zone grows and it's growing larger. And the river otters that we brought from Louisiana in the Gulf of Mexico in nineteen eighty-five, or about nineteen ninety-two, by two thousand, river otters had returned to the interior rivers of Iowa. Their genetic makeup was in the origin of the Gulf of Mexico. I mean, those critters are here now, they're back, they're essentially some of our ambassadors to link us to the Gulf of Mexico. There are family fishery people that have family businesses, they are struggling because of the loss in the shrimp industry, because their lifestyle is being negatively impacted by our lifestyle. We all want cheap pork, that's our system. I don't see how an Iowa farmer can go to the Gulf of Mexico and look those shrimp fishermen in the eye and say, sorry buddy, our system trumps your system. They are providing protein for a hungry world the same as you. It's just a matter of, as Brenda Breach invoked, there's something moral going on here that we're all buying into, and it's not really, this is something that's beyond Iowa, it's beyond Story County, it's beyond the master matrix. We've done a system that is extracting the wealth of our planet and running it down the river. It's treating our water like dirt, it's treating our water like it doesn't, like, oh, it's too bad, I guess we'll just make more. I don't get it. I don't see how an agriculture industry in Iowa can impose a will, a way of life on the shrimp fishermen in the Gulf of Mexico. I don't get it. But do as you must, I'm sure you will. Thank you for your time.
Pat, thank you. Next, I have Carolyn Raffensperger.
I had to go to college and graduate school, graduate school and law school before I ever figured out how to spell it. Other people just had to go to kindergarten for their name. My name is Carolyn Raffensperger, and I live at three-seven-zero-three Woodland in Ames. And I am part of a family farm in North Dakota, and we raise cattle, a pretty large cow-calf operation. And when my husband was sixty-five, he moved to take a job at Iowa State, and we still have our farm. And one of the key things about our farm is that he was very careful about the animal-to-land ratio, that there were only so many animals that our land could absorb. And we have thirty-five hundred acres in North Dakota, or did at the time when we left. And we did not have a lot, we had a hundred brood, a hundred cows, and so at sometimes we could have three hundred animals on that very large farm, raised them on prairie. But it was a really careful ratio between what the land could absorb and what was too much. And a definition of intoxic is too much of something that could be a good thing. And it seems to me that fifteen thousand hogs on that very small area of land is just too many hogs. And, you know, when we aren't able, as a government, to actually make choices about what is not just legal, but what is just, what is moral, then we're asking, what's the role of government? And I really believe and subscribe to the idea that your job as our government representatives is to take care of the things we share and to help us do what we cannot do together. We can't build a road, we can't do a whole lot of things. And I'm here speaking on behalf of future generations, that I don't want Iowa to be the number fiftieth state forever in terms of the loss of natural areas and water quality and all of those things. And it seems to me, the government's responsibility to take care of public health is paramount. Brenda Breach spoke eloquently about the problems with asthma. So what's in that air that we don't like? Around Thanksgiving, I couldn't hang my clothes out in Ames, in Story County, and we saw on the news, on Des Moines Register and on TV, that people in Des Moines couldn't breathe the air. It stunk! And it was offensive. So, well, you know, people don't like bad smells, and we sort of dismiss the fact that it doesn't smell good. But the fact of the matter is that smell is one of our key biological warning systems. And you don't like the smell of that hog manure, and I'm being kind, you don't like the smell of it. There's something that tells you it's wrong. You don't need a doctor to tell you that this stinks, and that it's telling you something important biologically, that this is a problem. So what's in that air quality coming from confined animal feeding operations? There's three things that you need to worry about. The first is the particulate matter. Our lungs are not made to inhale dust, carrying all sorts of other things on it. Our lungs aren't made for that. So the first is the particulate matter. And when you get increases in particulate matter, and you're breathing that, you get all sorts of public health issues. You get increased stress, you get increased cardiovascular problems, and these all have incremental and cumulative effects. The second thing that you need to worry about are the chemicals that are actually toxic coming out of these things. You smell some of them and you don't smell some others. You do smell hydrogen sulfide, you do smell ammonia, these are toxic chemicals. We've had other confined animal feeding operations where the pigs themselves died from hydrogen sulfide. We were not meant to breathe that, and it is a warning system that we ignore at our own peril. And you are putting children at risk if you decide to put those CAFOs within such a close distance of your schools, of your hospitals, of your vulnerable populations, the elderly, people with compromised immune systems, asthma, people with cardiovascular diseases, people who are having suppressed immune systems because of treatments for arthritis, things like that. And the third thing that you need to worry about is infectious agents. So we've heard quite a bit of testimony today about antibiotic resistance. So we know that confined animals of any species tend to get diseases, and the antibiotics are treating them, can't treat all viruses and other things. So you need to worry about those infectious agents. You will not see the creeping public health issues. You will not see that child in the middle of the night that can't breathe. You will not see the increases in blood pressure from stress, and then the cardiovascular problems from the particulate matter. You won't see that, but they're going to be there. And we don't want the kind of economic development that is developing the co-pays for all of the diseases that are going to be, you know, running rampant from the increase in hogs and their manure. And, you know, there's another species, Catch Larbaum spoke so eloquently about the otters, and I want to speak on behalf of pollinators. We know that stench actually interferes with pollinators who are, pollinating, they are dependent on smell, to smell the flowers of the building trees. So anyone who has a orchard, anyone who is dependent on pollinators for food or even for the beauty of them, the stench of a CAFO interferes with pollination. And I'll be close by saying one other thing. I live a mile and a half from Dakota Access's pipeline. And so in Story County, what we're doing is becoming a sacrifice zone in terms of our water quality. We're just going to cite every single noxious thing that can possibly come our way and just say, can't say no, can't say no. I started out by saying that your job is to be the steward of the common wealth, of the roads, the bridges, the parks, the air, the wildlife that we all share. And my job is to register my consent or my dissent. And without my consent, and without the consent of the government, we do not have legitimate government, we do not have legitimate government. We either have anarchy or we have a dictatorship. And I believe that we stand together, this group that has sat here for hours and said we do not give our consent to the poisoning of our land, our water, our pollinators, our otters, our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Next, I have Wendy Schneider.
Hi, my name is Wendy Schneider. Is this for good luck?
Yeah.
I'm at six-two-eight-one-five, Perdino's Drive, and that is in Nevada Township. So I'm just south of Nevada, but near to Indian Creek and several of its tributaries. I'm here for a couple of reasons. Like many others, I'm concerned about water, but I'll spare you most of my remarks on water because I think we've been covered pretty thoroughly. I do want to mention one thing, we've been talking a lot about injection and hoping that an injection method will reduce run- an injection method will reduce runoff and therefore reduce water, the potential for water contamination. But every time we mention injection, we also have to remember that during the winter, those restrictions on injection are lifted. They can be waived on an emergency basis, they can be waived for the winter time application. So every winter, even if we have a plan that calls for injection, there's still going to be spreading during the winter, there's still will be a significant threat of water contamination. The other reason, moving away from water, that I'm concerned about this application is because, like a couple of other people in this audience, I've been here before. I was in Milford Township when a CAFO was proposed in Milford Township. And so I have a fair amount of experience with the application process and also how the DNR treats these. And based on my experience, I feel that there are a couple of mistakes that are being made in how this application is being waived, and I wanted to talk about three of those. The first two relate to the scoring of master matrix.
Can you pull the mic closer to you?
Sure. Good enough. The first one I want us to talk about is the scoring in a number of categories, but I believe most closely identified this with question four, for distance from water sources. You get points if you have above the minimum separation distance from creeks and inches with water and other, some transient sources of water. And the reason I have questions about the thirty points that Ethan teach the applications in this category is if you look at the documentation attached to them, you will find a map. And that map, you will carefully, has a date on it. And what's the date? The date is February 2008. Our maps, our water maps, have not been updated in ten years, almost eleven years at this point. And this is something that came up with the Milford Township, that came up, in fact, after it had gone through the Board of Supervisors. After the application reached the DNR, we had an episode of heavy rainfall. And a number of people were concerned at that time and went out to the CAFO location and looked around and found, and even though there wasn't a stream on the map, but they were using the application, there was almost a stream that was blocking access to the CAFO. And they took photos of it and they took videos of it and they sent it to the DNR and they said, "Hey, you know, we actually do have a water source problem here." And the DNR said, "Well, we can't look at evidence of actual flooding. We can only look at evidence that is shown on our map." And we said, "But wait, what map is from? February 2008?" And anybody who's lived in Story County over the last ten years knows that we've had a lot of flooding events since 2008. And we said, "Hey, wait, that doesn't seem fair, that you're basing this on an outdated map." And the Supervisors will criminalize that, it's a high priority at the DNR, we will have it done within a year or by 2016 anyways. Here we are, four years later, four and a half years later, we still don't have those maps in Story County. And it's peculiar, right? Because I believe almost the entire state of Iowa has those maps, there are only fifteen counties where the maps have not yet been outdated. Excuse me, have not yet been updated. So I believe that giving points for distance from water sources based on dramatically outdated maps is not justified. We really don't know exactly what's going on. Until we get those maps, we shouldn't be awarding those points. I think that, I mean, if I were sitting in your desk, I would say to the DNR, "No more applications until you get us good maps." And at the very least, we're not going to award points in categories that are based on separation from water sources. And so if we look at that in this application, that's thirty points on each application. Another problem that I saw with the application, based on my experience, was also something that I think Ethan, you discussed, is this question of number twenty, which obviously could have bothered you guys as well. And number twenty is the issue of whether or not there's a history. The reason that it probably bothered you is because this application is different. If you look at almost every CAFO application, it is a combined application that comes not only from the finisher, but also from the producer or the integrator, i.e. somebody like Nastros, somebody like Smithfield, somebody like Delsen. And so the inquiry there is not, has the individual finisher, who's oftentimes like the folks here setting up the CAFO for the first time, but rather has the producer had a history of violations. And that, for those of you who haven't looked at all the contract documents involved in these projects, the producer governs much of the day-to-day operation of the CAFO. The producer will specify the food, the schedule of care, the details of shipping, the details of medical care. So it makes sense, it's a logical inquiry, when you're looking at history, to look at the facilities that are run by the integrator. And we don't have that in that application. So I think it's an incomplete application. The analogy I would make is, let's say, let's say you are applying to set up a daycare in your home. And you know that the fact that your son has a felony conviction and lives with him is going to be a problem, so you ask them to move out and you submit the application and nobody with a felony conviction in the house, you're good to go. But then bring them back in. We wouldn't accept that in the context of a daycare. I don't know why we would accept it in a facility or three facilities of the size that have the potential to affect so many more people. So I think that those thirty points should not have been given because the application is incomplete. And I think that they could have been given if you had the identity of the producer, if you don't. And so because it's ambiguous, that should have gone to the DNR. The final mistake, or area that I'm uncomfortable with with this application process is not the master matrix specifically, but the understanding of what the board's options are now. And I know that a lot of people in this room have sent emails, I've sent emails to Board Supervisors, and we've all expressed a number of concerns. And most of us have gotten back very nice, very polite emails that inform us that the board has no power here, that the board has no legal role to play in the decision to cite this CAFO. And maybe we should think about modernizing those. And I think that there is a core truth to that. We all agree in this room that the DNR will have a final decision. I think some of us may be happy about that and some of us may be upset about that, but we all agree that that isn't, that the DNR isn't at the final decision maker. However, that does not end the inquiry into what the Supervisors' powers are. And because I'm the sort of person who likes reading long materials, I decided I was going to go near the statute, just to sort this out in my own mind. In the statute, if you go to the statute, first we have some of the information that Ethan talked about, for example, the Supervisors shall investigate, shall look into the facts, and shall score the application. But then there's another section which describes the options open to the Supervisors at that moment, and there are three of them. And I think it's worth drilling down just a little bit deeper because the choices that the Supervisor may at this point determine what the DNR can do. So your first choice, option A, option one here, is that you can, if you can score it, you can score the application in passing fashion, so you get your 420 points, and Supervisors can vote to recommend approval. Now, if they take option A, that does have some impact because what it means is that the DNR then cannot go back in and re-score. So the DNR no longer has access to these controversies that are considered settled. So even if we, so if we had doubts about whether or not they should have taken points for the water, but we give them a passing four and we vote yes, then the DNR cannot go back in and investigate the scoring of the master matrix. Their inquiry simply does not mean the code, if it means the code is passed. So by choosing to vote for approval, we are tying the DNR's, that's option one. Option two is taking the points away. If you have doubts, don't give the points. Now, that doesn't end the process of inquiry, like the numbers speakers have said, if you take the points away, it isn't an automatic fail. What it means is that then it goes through the DNR. The DNR, which has more investigative capacities and more knowledge, then does their own investigation and re-score. So that's what happens if we decide we're going to take the points away. The third option, which is also very clear in the statute, is that you can decide that the Henrys have earned the points and be comfortable with that, but you can still vote to recommend denial. And you can vote to recommend denial based on, what do we hear, based on comments in the room. Now, that may not stand up to the DNR review, but that is absolutely one of the choices open to the Supervisors. And I think that in this case, it's an apt choice because what we have here for us is a very unusual application. It's unusual that we have three at once, it's unusual that they're so closely clustered together, and it's perhaps the most unusual, looking at what I see right there in that map in front of me, which is all of those manure application areas which are on the right of the DNR, Nevada itself. So this is a lot of manure being spread in such a way as to impact many more people than are typically impacted by the CAFO application. So this might be very well a perfect opportunity to use that option to say, "We think they've made the points, but because of the sighting, because of proximity to so many people, we are going to recommend denial." I would hope very much seeing you guys come to that position as well. So thank you.
Wendy, thank you very much. Next, I have Matt Marston.
Good afternoon, Matt.
Matt, after you.
I'd like to say these are hot off the press, but I can't see them.
Okay, they've been here so long.
My name is Matt Marston, I am the City Administrator for the City of Nevada, Iowa. I have been asked by Mayor Barker and the Nevada City Council to come in front of you today and summarize what was at our public forum last night at the City of Nevada Council meeting. So what I have handed to you is a summary of eleven people that spoke at the council meeting last evening, and then in addition to that, with a summary of each of those that spoke. And then in addition to that, a packet of documentation from eighteen people who had contacted the City of Nevada prior to the November tenth public meeting. Overall themes of those that spoke are exactly what we've heard here today. Air quality and water, future economic development in Nevada, concerns for future housing development in the north side, I'm not sure if that's one that's been discussed, a decrease of property, tax valuations and home values, increased damage to roads in the area, concern of proximity to the wasteland applications near the City of Nevada, and concerns about monitoring a facility that plans to be followed under the authority of the Iowa DNR. In addition to that, I have been asked by Mayor Barker to read his statement, he was unable to be here today, so I will go ahead with his statement in the interest of time. As, quoting from Mr. Mayor Barker, "As a state, or as a city, has no governing authority over this process, it has been a challenge issuing for the city to address. Like the cold yard proposal of ten years ago, I have concerns about any project that could limit future development in our city or end property values or quality of life for our residents. Unfortunately, the master matrix system appears significantly limits the ability of local governments to have input in the process. The system is outdated and does not reflect modern agriculture, and it insinuates farmers who work for local leaders collaboratively, and does not give adequate time for communities to have the types of conversations these types of proposals were born. Additionally, there are members of our community passionately concerned about air and water quality, and unfortunately, we must trust our local farmers and the Iowa DNR to provide proper oversight, as city staff does not have the expertise or the authority to manage those concerns. The Henry family has valued members of the Nevada community for generations. However, I feel this process of matrix systems does both the family and our community in disservice." End of the statement for Mr. Barker. I've been asked by the Council to relay several of their concerns. Mr. Walker has addressed the concern of the property value and expansion of our housing market, which is in dire need of bringing or improving into the City of Nevada. So his concern is the housing market and the economic development impact that that could have. We've heard from a couple of the, or at least one Council member, and I'm not going to expand on anybody else. My professional thoughts are this, I look at it from a housing perspective. I do have concerns about limitations of future housing expansion within the city limits of Nevada. Having worked on a project already that has been drug on for almost the entire time I've been here for two years, it's disheartening that we're not making progress on that, so we're really limited as to the expansion of housing outside the city limits. So that is a concern of mine as a City Administrator moving forward. Also, I'd have to be honest with you, the city budget is always a concern for a City Administrator. We talked about the taxable valuations of home decline that we've heard about earlier. I've had conversations with County Assessor Mike Twichirath, and it is a concern of mine. I don't have extensive data for what I would call to this area, but those are the professional statements that I truly believe that will, that could impact our community. If you have any questions, I'd be really glad that you could answer those, but I appreciate your time and thank you for listening.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Next, I have John Klaus.
I'm Trevor, member of the Board. John Klaus from 2167 Halfpoint Drive in Ames. An interesting perspective up here, you're very impressive when you're questioning. This is about an administrative rule of the Department of Natural Resources, and it's called the master matrix. And it came about through some rigorous rulemaking effort when the legislature, when the eight of the passing court stripped the counties of any local governing authority with respect to confined feeding operations. It was claimed as a way to provide the Board Supervisors with a reasoned, evidence-based way to influence the outcome of the applications. Like any administrative rule, it's a work in progress, there's room for improvement. I could hear the room for improvement today. If the Board fails to or decides not to recommend approval of this application and requests a hearing, the matter will go before the Environmental Protection Bureau at one of its regulatory agencies within thirty days. And it will be an opportunity for continued principal articulation of ways to improve the master matrix. I personally at this moment think it will be improved greatly. If one, the passing score was raised from fifty to maybe sixty or seventy percent. I also think there's a room for something called a demerit. There's something happening that doesn't, none of them does not warrant any positive points, but actually should require some special effort to overcome the demerit, something to counter it. Maybe a plan that runs afoul of the city's or the county's carefully engineered, comprehensive plan. And finally, I think that when the Board of Supervisors exercising its scrutiny and conducting hearings like this comes to the reasoned conclusion that this project should not go forward, at least as it's been presented, then I think that should be a ruling on the field, and the applicant then has the obligation to come forward with very clear and convincing evidence that's got the right to go. So that's what I have to say. I'd like you to deny this permit today so you get an opportunity for a hearing. Maybe we can parlay that hearing before the Environmental Protection into something akin to agreement, and we can take that to the Attorney General's, the Rules Coordinator, and the Governor's office. We might choose then to recommend to the Department of Natural Resources, but they'd review this rule and give some further consideration. And finally, the Board of Supervisors, like any citizen, does have the ability to petition for rulemaking and rule divisions under the Administrative Procedures Act. Do not be inclined in appropriate expenditure of funds by the county to pursue rulemaking activities that might work to improve this process, to make it better, maybe encourage other counties to join in that effort. So thank you very much.
John, thank you. Next, I have Ted Rasmussen.
Wish I would have stopped at Casey's for a donut. So hello, everyone. My name is Ted Rasmussen. I was recently elected Story County Treasurer. I want to start today by thanking everybody for keeping the discussion very civil, very to the point, and providing a lot of great information. I want to thank the supervisors for allowing us this opportunity.
We got your address.
Oh, 71, 751 US Highway 30, Colo, Iowa. That address is important to me. Our family has been on that address for about 146 years, going close to 150 years. I'm the seventh, no, I'm the sixth generation to live and work on that farm. My daughter is the seventh generation to live in the farmhouse that we live in on that farm. We've been in this county quite a while. That's my mom's family. My dad's family lives north of Fernald, about two miles from the Richland 10 site. We've only been there about 100 years, so we've had a lot of time and commitment in that neighborhood. I grew up on a farm, so I have a lot of conflicting opinions and feelings on this situation. I also live very near to the confined cattle operation on Highway 30 with the, of Church family. Farming is what Iowans do. It's what Iowans have done for hundreds of years, and it's what many Iowans will continue to do. So this is an issue that is always going to affect that rural city divide, but this is also an issue that affects the rural-rural situation. We are one of many families that have been up north of Fernald for well over 100 years. Depending upon how you want to divide us up, I have a family here that'd be second cousins, third cousins that live in that same area. And many families in our neighborhood have been there for well over 100 years. There's a lot of century farms there. We've also farmed next to with the Henrys for years. We've cooperated with them on zecorn and on many things. They've been good neighbors for all intents and purposes through that time. The one point that my wife brought up to me was the best neighbor and the greatest farmer in the world can't make poop not stink. So that is, that is obviously everybody's first concern. I won't go into the water and air quality concerns that many other people have done. I think we've had a great opportunity to hear those scientific facts. The one concern I have about the transparency of this operation is that Mr. Henry earlier said he talked to many neighbors within the mile zone. That mile zone must have been very tight mile, because I have friends and family who live in what I would call within a mile that never received any type of notification or consideration or approach about this situation. They were given notice about two to three weeks after it had already been submitted and just before it hit the papers. Many of them weren't even given notice before it hit the papers. That concerns me greatly. The impact of 5,000 hogs is pretty massive. Somebody said earlier that they'd grown up on a, on a farm early, years ago, next to a cattle and hog operation. Forty head of cattle and 60 hogs in a small building does not equal 5,000 hogs in a very small confined space. So I would have liked to have seen the Henrys reach out to some of those neighbors who have been in that neighborhood for 150 years. Talk to them, get a little bit of input. Many of them are farmers. Many of them feel like a farmer should be allowed to farm however they want. It wouldn't have hurt, though, for relations, for them to have reached out a little more quickly and a little more open, rather than wait until the final step, right before this goes to the board of supervisors, to do their outreach. My wife has been pushing us to move to Ames for years, and she had recently come to the conclusion that maybe living out in the country was nice, living near the farm would be great. We actually live, or we have a farm directly kitty corner from the Richland 10 operation that we had looked at for building a house. That is obviously out of consideration now, but we've also considered building out closer to my mom and dad's farm, which is about a mile and three quarters away. I am discouraged, though, as my cousin Andrea, who unfortunately due to the length of today's meetings wasn't able to, to speak, recently went through a lengthy process with the board of supervisors for her and her husband to build a house on the farming operation there one mile away. And even though Matt had farmed for, for I think upwards of 10 years with Andrea's father, Jim, it took multiple trips to the board and multiple trips to zoning to get their six acres zoned so that they could build a brand new house out there, and they will now be that close to the operation. Knowing the, the time and effort it took them to do that, it is very discouraging knowing that that's what we would have to do as well to live that close to a confined hog operation. So that's, that's really my concern with the housing up there, but one of the other things, I'm just going to address some of the things that the Henrys have said. This is a goal for them to get into farming. We farm about 1,000 acres. My dad has farmed that for years and had a lot of success farming that. I know they farm much more land than that. I know that they employ a fairly large staff, and they've been very successful farming. My concern is a jump from zero, zero livestock operation to 15,000 hogs in a matter of months seems a little massive. It also seems a little, I don't know, a little vague when they say we're going to manage the facilities. I would like a little more explanation of what manage the facilities means, and I do want to say, reiterate, because somebody said this quite quietly, I don't know that everybody can do it. They want to do what is right, but will their partners in the hog operation pay them enough to do what is right? So that is kind of my final concern as a private citizen. As a recently elected Story County official, I will take office in a couple of weeks. My major concern is with the quality of life in Story County. We've never really had that many KFOs in Story County compared to other counties. I think that provides an immense quality of life improvement over some of our neighboring counties. I have a lot of concerns that, once we start bringing these units in and operations in, they will multiply quickly. I think the county should look at each one individually, but also look at what we can do and what will impact the community. Rick ran on a growth platform. Marty mentioned multiple times how he was one of the few elected officials with Stacy Harridge east of I-35. I can remember, many of you probably can too, when Nevada was named the 26th best small town in America. It went on the sign. It was taking a lot of pride. Things like that are going to be tough to achieve if we have this type of operation so close, when we look up at that map, that, that manure area is so close to the city. I also think that we have done a good job growing economically. We have people drive into the county every day for jobs. With this type of operation that close to the north side of Nevada, there are major concerns about where we're going to put in housing for these types of things. So the last thing I'll say is, you know, this is something my wife, who can be much more succinct than I, I often tend to drone on, but my wife mentioned that, you know, Story County always gets a bad rap as everything going towards Ames, towards the west side of the county. Everything good happens over there. It's very much a, a divide between the areas. She pointed out, as she was also unable to attend as she watched a video today, today is a perfect dichotomy of where Ames and Gilbert get $800,000 homes, and Nevada and the east side of the county get 15,000 hogs. That is a very dispiriting thing, because I know that she won't be the only one that comes to that conclusion. I want to see the county government work for the whole county. I want it to work for every member of the county, and I want to be able to see it grow in smart ways. I don't want to tell farmers how to farm. I just want the, the board to consider every possible impact this could have on the growth of the county. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Next, I have Mary Sand.
My issues have been stated several times.
Thank you, Mary. Next, I have Connie Chumlin.
Connie, that's a big girl, but she wanted to say that she would echo what Brenda said.
Okay, thank you. Next is Jamie and Charlie Carver.
Good afternoon. Jamie and Charlie Carver. We live at 2328 11th Street on the northeast corner of Nevada.
Jamie, just a little closer to the microphone.
We live on the northeast corner of Nevada.
Sorry, some voices.
Our family will be directly affected by both the KFO locations and the application site, one of which will only be deep away from our house. We have written and submitted our letters of opposition to the board and others, so we're not going to talk about the issues we've already addressed, like air quality, health concerns, water quality, drainage districts of the team, the Harrington Park, and decreased property values. But we are going to talk a minute about our family. We've lived in the Nevada area our whole lives and decided to raise our family here for many reasons. We built a home three years ago with the Nevada city limits, went to Emily to get away from another hog confinement. We have two teenage sons and have always taught them the importance of making good choices. We tell them that they will be faced with difficult situations every day and remember to think through each decision they make because it could affect them later down the road. What the last few weeks have reminded us is that we also need to teach them how sometimes the decisions of others can also have very real impacts on your life. So we're here today to show our sons that if that does happen, you have to stand up for yourself, speak up for what is right, and do everything you can, no matter what the outcome may be. That being said, the proposed KFOs are not a good choice for the community of Nevada, and we hope that those who can will stand up for us as we move for our county.
Next is Mitch Baum. Do I have Mitch? Okay. Next is Jean Watts.
I live at 1708 7th Street in Nevada. I'm here because I'm a mother with two small children. They attend the elementary school here. My son has lung disease, which we struggle to keep him out of the hospital anytime he is sick. I am concerned about the air quality here. We moved here almost five years ago from Illinois, also a very agricultural state. We're not against farmers, we're not against agriculture. I'm concerned about the factory farm impacting our children, especially with the manure applications. These fields drain into Harrington Park, which is where a lot of the children have soccer practice. And anytime there are big rains, that park floods, and that manure water will just sit there. And across the street is the middle school. I just want to know, is it going to be the city of Nevada who will be paying for the cleanup of this if the kids start getting sick because of the bacterial load in that water that children go and play in a park? I think my children, and the children of my friends, should be able to play outside without worrying about getting mostly sick.
Thank you. Next is Joe Ripeto.
Hi, Rick. My name is Joe Ripeto. I live at 1317 Kenyon Circle in Ames. I have to tell you, I'm even more alarmed about air quality and water quality than when I came in this morning, but that's not what I want to talk to you about. It's been covered. This is the first time that I've felt it was important enough to come and address the supervisors in about three years now, and I want to tell you a brief story about my last visit here, and you'll see why it ties in. I came three years ago as a skeptic of the Ames annexation to the east, to build the industrial park with all that entail, depending whether or not it was needed. And I wasn't alone in that. There were other skeptics. Is it needed? Can we afford it? Is it well thought out? What about the air quality of industry? We went through all those questions, and I can remember the response, and Rick, you were here with two other people who are no longer supervisor. And the response I got was pretty much this. Ames has its plans. It has a good staff. It wouldn't propose this if it didn't know what it was doing. Who are we as county officials, even though we have the right to restrict this, even though we have the right to slow it up, constrain? Who are we as county officials to question their judgment? And I got to thinking about that, as I've heard about Nevada's plans. They want to have some northern housing. They have a good staff. I'm sure they know what they're doing. And if these operations go through that close to the city, it's, it's like putting a big wall around the northern part of the city. And you all know annexation law as well as I do, probably better. When cities want to annex territory, they cannot leave behind an item, okay? They cannot leave behind property that is surrounded by city limits. So in terms of how you would go around hog lots and grow, it's just out of the question, and we know it is. So I can't really understand how, when we're talking about the possibility of permanent housing for Story County residents that want to be in the city limits of Nevada, these are, this is permanent residents, permanent families as opposed to hogs with only a five month lifespan. This doesn't make really good sense to me as a trade-off. And I just want to close, and I really hadn't thought about this until Mr. Rasmussen made his statement, but we do want to make sure that every city and entity in the county gets treated equally. And I thought, Rockwood County, when I was here that time, three years ago, showed incredible deference to Ames, a willingness to bend over backwards, and it seems like Nevada, given the concerns that it's raised, deserves that same kind of deference to the extent you can possibly give it in this case. So I would urge you to deny this. Thank you.
Next is Ron Hume. Uh, next is Ron Hewitt. Ross, Ron. Next is Cindy Hilton-Braham.
Uh, my concerns have been addressed, uh, especially by the mayor of Nevada.
Sure. Thank you, Cindy. Uh, next is Martha Ann Atkins.
My name's Martha Ann Atkins, and I live at thirteen seventeen Kenyon Circle in Ames, Iowa. And I'm going to say right away that I do agree with the last speaker, but it's not just because he's my cousin. There's three things that I wanted to say to you today. One, obviously, I implore you to put a hold on this, and to go through the process that has been discussed, of how you can stop and say no now, and make adjustments, and maybe come up with something better. But I want you to try. That's the first thing that I want you to do. And I want you to say no. The second thing I want you to do is when you have this pause, which I hope you can get, I want you to get somebody on your staff or yourself to explore what has been happening in North Carolina. I have relatives in North Carolina. And the first thing that's happened is they have put some constraints down there on our operations. And they're not happy with them down there, at least the ones that I have spoken to. They, they must have done something right to get some of that stopped down there. So I want you to find out what they've done. And these are some things that we maybe could explore. Also, my cousin, who lives in Wilmington, I've talked to him recently now. He, his house survived. That was wonderful. Floodwaters all around. But the, the truth is that he doesn't know where he can continue to live down there. He's as old as I am. And he's concerned, as an elderly person, about the health problem that he has down there. The water, you're not hearing it much on the news. The water in most of North Carolina is filthy. And what happened is those hog confinement containment tanks, they like to call them lagoons, which, lucky me, lagoon I have a name. But the, uh, lagoon to me is in the Caribbean or something. But they, they talk about those hog, and they're made of cement, cement cracks, and they have gone into the groundwater with all the toxic stuff that's in those lagoons. But what happened, when they flooded down there, the, the water, the water came in from the hurricane, and we're not going to have a hurricane here, but we do have floods in Iowa, big floods. And the, the water came in, and it, it rained so much, and, um, the lagoons were full. They overflowed. And they went in the rivers. They went in the streams. They went in the gutters. They went everywhere. And he says it stinks when it starts to dry out, because it is manure. And manure stinks. And it has all of these terrible health problems. And what he's afraid of, he won't drink the water down there anymore. He'll only go buy water water. But his wife won't cook with it either. And in the spring, when they start having vegetable crops, fruit crops for immediate human consumption, he's worried about eating that food that is being watered with that filthy, uh, infected water. So we need to find out if that's really happening, if that's... We've got an example in North Carolina. And we need to use that example, and use that information, and find out if that would happen to us. I think, I happen to think it would. But I, I don't have the evidence. And there's, there's another reason that a lot of those hog producers are coming to Iowa. People don't want them in North Carolina anymore. So they're coming up here. So why should we take North Carolina's problems up here? It doesn't make sense. If it's not good down there, it's probably not going to be good for us as a state here. So those are the two things I want you to do right away. And in the longer-range vision, I am very concerned about our cavalier attitude with Iowa soil. This is some of the best land for food growing in the whole world. And not only are we covering it over with cement and, and houses, and I understand all that, but we're not taking care of our land. A lot of you are as old as I am, and so you remember who Will Rogers was. And he said, "We're not making any more land, so we better take care of it." So he's right. Will Rogers has been gone a long time. But he was absolutely right. We cannot be cavalier about how we husband our land. And we are. We think it's always going to be there. The air is always going to be there. The water's always going to be there. It is, but not unless we take care of it. And we have to take care of it. We have to think about what's happening to the land we live on. This is wonderful land. And that is the long-range thing as supervisors on this particular set of land called Story County. I want you to take care of it. And think more about every decision that you make. And I thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next I have Nancy Rasmussen. Nancy, have to go?
I want to leave.
Okay. And next I have Margaret James, representing Margaret James.
Margaret James, twenty twenty-eighth Riley Road in Iowa. Some of you might recognize me as being the Sanitarian or Department Head for Environmental Health. What I'm hearing is antibiotics, hormones, toxins, lies, water quality, air quality, flooding, property value, density, animal welfare, and community development. All of those things are not reflected in that master matrix. Not one thing. I am speaking today as myself, because as the Sanitarian, I have to keep my opinions to myself. I have to be neutral around it. And I do a very good job there. I've convinced most of you that I am the devil. I'm the previous. Go around. I'm not the devil. All of those things that I listed are not public health, and they are not environmental health. They are not. And those are the things that I have trained in. Today's meeting has been very long, especially for the folks of the Valley Chamber. Very, very long. And I apologize for that. But today was good in that we could compare the process for housing development and the process for animal confinement. The process is laughable. The differences in the process is laughable. I mean, little, little flowers are getting more consideration than the people living in Nevada. It, I think, is totally wrong. Okay? Now, um, as far as changing the score on that, I mean, that would keep this process alive. You, it's, in my opinion, it's very easy to score these things. It's, it's an exercise in checking the boxes for the most part. Okay? There's not a lot of hoops and things that they have to go through. If you lived, um, you know, Karst topography or somewhere where it's a lot more difficult to get the spacing, um, then the master matrix might work. But around here, just about anybody could put in a confinement with enough work. So, um, I don't think changing the score at this point is really an option. I think that all of those things are passed. Line closed. I think that the Board of Supervisors need to vote to deny the approval of the application. And in that way, the process doesn't die for these three CAPOS. If you send a passing score and a passing recommendation, it's going in, period. Period. It's going in. If you send a passing score, a denial based on comments, then it's still alive. And we could get more discussion and more attention from our legislators to know that this is not working. These comments, there's no way they show up on the master matrix. And it's just not fair. I don't think we have the science to support these things going in. And I think that we need to really put the brakes on. Thank you.
So I've been careful. I've been careful not to comment. To drag this out from people talking. But let me just say this about Margaret James. So, um, what you guys have seen today, and in the past, if you're paying attention, is somebody who cares so deeply and so passionately about the environment. And, um, we, by virtue of, um, of the necessity of conducting business, we put her in a position where she's got to set aside her personal beliefs in order to objectively... And this has been really hard on Mark. Margaret and I had a long conversation yesterday about maintaining objectivity in her professional role. And what we talked about this morning is if you've got to speak, you've got to speak. You just got to do it as Margaret James' citizen, not as Margaret James' environmental coordinator. I hope everybody here appreciates the really tough emotional position that Margaret's put in through all of this. And, and, uh, mind you, Mark, she does a great job separating the two and working through it in that position. We're getting close to the end of the people who have requested to talk. Uh, next is Jennifer Knox. Is Jennifer still here?
I don't believe she is here.
Okay. And next is Karen Stein.
Karen, hi, Karen. Sorry. Karen, I don't know if everyone's realized this, but we are getting close to that...
Oh, we've realized.
Three thirty pickup. Thankfully, my mother is going to my school. Um, Karen Stein had to pick up her children from school, but she left me her statement here. Excuse me. Huh? Where's she from? Uh, Ames, Iowa. I do not know her address.
She's about, I see, twenty-five oh three Ridge.
That sounds, yeah. Um, so Karen's an architect, and she is concerned particularly about the proximity to the community, the toxins in the air quality, force on the children, elderly, pregnant women, and anyone with breathing challenges or illness. Um, as an architect, I do question the lack of plans, actual drawings, and showing the proximity of the confinement and the fields where the manure will be disposed. So the questions she has here are, what is the actual physical plan of the confinement, uh, and the closest residential area? What is the emergency plan, backup plan, or Plan B when something does inevitably incur? Uh, what is Nevada's compliance? Hmm, I'm not sure. Comprehensive master plan for Nevada? Um, and what is the impact? Can't read this other question. Uh, why not collect the hog's waste in a collections tank like the one at the ISU Dairy Farm? It seems to work great in cases of emergencies and floods, and, uh, the waste is then converted to fuel. Where are the comments and recommendations from medical professionals, pediatricians, allergists, and oncologists? What are the recommendations from the school of that med, or ISU specifically, concerning swine fever and disease outbreaks? Uh, lastly, she said her kids and I have been unable to swim in our local rivers and beaches due to the high toxins. It's been three years now that she's been trying to take her children swimming in Story County. And every day that they've attempted, she's checked in the DNR, has advised against it. Um, so surely fifteen thousand hogs won't help that situation either. Uh, finally, she says even the lawyer said no history, no points should be awarded. Um, there is medical history. Some children and adults have gotten sicker. Also, um, we have not, we have not asked our medical professionals, so please do not ignore them. Uh, she asks that you recommend that this does not pass, um, and that we do not incur a health issue or crisis as, as an outcome of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Karen.
And I have a petition, if anyone would like to sign it.
And next is Ryan Melton.
Ryan also has a new question.
Okay. That's everybody who signed up. Uh, now's your chance, if anybody didn't sign up and would like to make a comment. Yes, sir, come right up. Start by introducing yourself.
Afternoon.
Hi.
My name is, uh, Bill Holstein. I live in Nevada, thirteen thirty-eighth Avenue. I apologize, I didn't intend to speak. I didn't organize my thoughts. But, uh, I would say that, uh, I grew up on a farm in western Illinois. We farrowed hogs in the field. Finished hogs in the field. That's not a better system, but that's, uh, the way we did it at that time. Uh, twenty years ago, the, uh, they were working on the matrix, and they were trying to establish at least minimum standards. We probably can expand and do some more things on the matrix at this point in time, but, uh, that's a political process. And, uh, I would say, in, in my lifetime, uh, technology is, is unbelievable. Several years ago, I heard that for every acre, we can get more than five times as many pounds of pork as we could back then. And, of course, we've more than doubled, uh, corn yields. But we have also, uh, with the animals, changed the breeding and, uh, rations and things. And, uh, the technology is, is wonderful. And I think that, uh, when the, uh, matrix, sort of, the matrix was coming in, the DNR came down hard and said, uh, you have to have a formal structure to put manure in to protect the water quality. And North Carolina's got a lot of sandy soils, and they have issues with water quality. Iowa doesn't have that problem. But what we ended up with was a, a, um, septic, uh, that some might pick, because we didn't have the chance for the sun or the wind to, uh, uh, help cleanse it. And, uh, so we've got a lot better water quality for a number of reasons than we had fifty or a hundred years ago. We've got better air quality than we had fifty or a hundred years ago. And within the past year, I've seen some of the new advances they're making, uh, excuse me, to help with, uh, odors, air quality, uh, round hog confinement. And, and I really believe in this technology. So I, I would say that the careful application of, uh, technology by high-quality people like the Hendrys is going to continue to move things forward. And I think that, uh, whatever I say here isn't going to change what happens on this matrix. But I think, I believe in technology, and I think things can go forward. And I hope that they can be part of it here. I wish we could wave a wand and, and redrofit some buildings from the last five years, but we can't. So thank you for the moment.
Bill, thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir, come on up.
I'm TJ Coconard, uh, two nine two eight one six hundred fifty Avenue, Maxwell, Iowa. Um, I've known Hendrys for a while. They were customers buying when I was in animal equipment. Based off of what Bill said on technology, these guys have always put their foremost passion in farming. Um, these guys have always been the forefront of stuff, and it's always... They've always been there, you know, to promote agriculture. And based on what they're saying today, I have, I have full confidence and full respect that all of their efforts will be for the better of themselves and the community. Uh, these guys are, are going to be top-notch at farming. They're going to be top-notch at hog production. Um, I grew up in a family farm, still a family farm with my dad. Um, when I look at these guys, it's a different thing I'm stepping through. What's the next step for rottrop? Well, how, how can we maintain that family farm mentality? And I see, I see it in these guys every day. And we deal with it every day. I mean, we're, we're struggling out in the country, and, and this is the next step. This is livestock production. It's been here for a long time, and, and everybody loves pork. Um, pulling in... Pulling into town this morning, you know, I didn't spell hog confinement. I spelled Nevada. So if we're going to start pointing fingers at livestock production, we need to look at what we're doing too. So that's my two cents worth, and I strongly suggest you push forward with this. Thank you.
Thanks, TJ. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Ryan Sampson, 15679 600 Avenue, Nevada, but actually in closer rural, those are some of the people. Grew up on a farm. I farmed my whole life. My grandpa farmed. My great-great-grandpa homesteaded farms, lost it in depression. I want to try to address some of the concerns that I've heard from people. Like I said, I feed livestock, I feed cattle, I raise cattle, I deal with the front end and the back end. The back end stinks. I like the front end. I like the middle the best. That's what we raise. I raised two kids, a daughter and a son. My son wants to come back and farm. I feed more cattle than my dad fed. I feed more cattle than his dad fed. It's increased through the years. Our ability to do more with the equipment that we have, with the technologies that we have, I've always thought that's improvement. My son and daughter, my daughter would come back. Her husband has two good jobs. They've got two daughters. They come to the farm. I never feel like I'm putting those kids in danger in feeding livestock. You know? I feel like the...I've never been called immoral before, except that one time with my wife. But I don't know what I'm doing that's so immoral in damaging to my grandkids. I can't wait. I've got some nieces and nephews that come out to my farm, and I've never, ever felt like I'm damaging them. But I feed more livestock than a lot of my neighbors or anybody else. I guess, I don't know. It's the modern day of agriculture, and I've never thought that's bad. It seems like agriculture is the only place that doesn't get to embrace technology and different things that every other aspect in our lives get to do. We all got cell phones. You know, we're all doing that. I think the cellphone is probably going to do more damage to our youngsters than the farm is. And I guess I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. Come up.
Good afternoon. Craig McMenney, 65622 200 Penn Street, Nevada. And I'm right across from one of those fields. And I don't have a problem with it. Forty-five years as an ag educator, I've had to work with a number of young people like this in the earth, saying, "What do you have to do to move to the next level?" I'm going to say thank you to all those that are on the opposite side, their concerns they need to be heard. I'm going to say to Scott and to Eric and to the Henry family, "You put your necks out to life when you come up here. It's not easy. I know the supervisors have a difficult task. I've worked on both sides of this issue." I said to someone this morning, "If I could have brought the 75 students I had last year at DMAC, my farm management class, the ones that are trying to talk to go back home to farm, and Brian, you know what I'm talking about? This is difficult. But there's a process that has to be gone through, we have to figure out. I challenge supervisors to do what you need to do. I challenge everybody else to sit down here. If you think there's things that need to be fixed, let's figure out a way to fix those by making the right types of decisions. Science is important. You know, when I talk about, just with Scott about this, I'm concerned about how the manure is supplied, but I taught soils. So I always think about cation exchange capacity. How's it going to get attached to the soils? So it's really important, I think, that we look, if we're going to use science, we look at science at all angles, and that we make the right types of decisions. That's all I've got to say. I told Scott that I would not take a pro or con position because I spent 45 years trying to get young people to go back home to farm, because I did not get to. It's the farm crisis. The farms disappeared. We need young people out there.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Seeing no one moving the microphone, we will close the public hearing. And now it is our time. The process that we're going to use, so we're going to start with whatever comments you guys want to make, and then we're going to go to each application one at a time and talk through the points, and then talk through our recommendation. But let's start with any comments. So I promised all of you, and let me say this to everybody who's here and has been here, what if not? That's exactly the way it's supposed to go. It's painful, it takes too long, but we in Story County have believed for years, long before the three of us were together, long before I was up here, and I've been up here the longest, believed that our responsibility was to gather feedback and go through the process of gathering feedback. And it's no fun at all for the Henrys, for sure, but it's part of the process for us to get through. So with that, I'll turn, of course, I'll start with you. Comments from anything we've heard? Or do you want to hold those or will we get to each one?
No, I'll make most of my comments now. I was born in Iowa, in North Iowa. I was a townie. I uncle some farms and her kids. You know, I spent a little bit of time with my cousins on the farms. I eat beef. I eat pork. I'm also an animal activist. For some people, fine, how do I resolve that? And sometimes it's tough. I care about water quality. I care about air. I call it, care about the land. I wonder what has asthma. I mean, I could just go on and on and on. I think we all can connect with what the stories were today. So as I thought about this, about where do I want to be as far as explaining why I'm going to sound a little hypocritical here with having been of all that and eating beef, et cetera. And I thought about my role as a supervisor. And I thought about what the board of supervisors have done in the last few years to initiate study of our water sheds. Actually, that's been us in the pretty recent. It's been, we just approved our third version strategic plan that tried to balance agriculture with growth needs. I thought about the comprehensive two cornerstone plant, and I thought about some of the restoration work doing, going on at EpiGrove, et cetera. So I thought a lot about this. And in each one of those, either previous board of supervisors or we up here spent your money, the majority of you, we spent your money. And I think that until there's work on the master matrix, until maybe after the first of the year, a new board discusses possibility, how they might want to weigh in down at the state, I'm going to vote to deny, based upon not the Henrys, because I'm really impressed. And not upon the other people who are here and who opened up and shared with me some of their confinement operations, et cetera. But I'm going to vote to deny, because how can we put so many hundreds of thousands of dollars between what we spent on consultants and what our staff time costs, et cetera, to keep moving forward on planning in the county when we can be set askew by a local family coming in and wanting fifteen, or wanting to raise 15,000 hogs times two? And if I understand the manure calculations correctly, it's four million gallons per site? If that's, I see Scott saying, no, that's not right. So I'm going to vote to deny because of that.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Lawrence. Marty.
Well, this is my hometown. I look out and see a lot of people I know live here, listen to a lot of you. My heart goes out in the sense that I'm looking at the map. You see me picking this up from time to time. It shows where the manure management plans are. Right across from my mailbox is one, and I have others scattered around me. Been a lot of time being on the school board, handing out a lot of payments here in town. We wish the kids well, sent them on their way. Some of them went to Iowa State that became Cyclones. Now, in my mind, this has been rattling around in a sense that I've shared with you, but we encourage our kids to attend Iowa State, premier land-grant college in the United States. Some of them go into the College of Ag, and some of them come out with degrees in animal science to whatever shape or form. I don't understand why it's a champion thing to attain that on the west side of the county, but if you come back to this side of the county, you are perceived as a negative to your community. I'd like to have somebody help square that circle, because the thing is, that's what they teach. This is where it's done. It's either, it shouldn't be done there, but it can be done here. Margaret addressed, as she was talking, as her environmental person. And I have worked long on many projects with her, and I ask her a pointed question here. Have we any record or any notice of violations from the CAFOs that we have? And I believe she said, she's had a number of things reported. And to me, that is a cross-check in and of itself, because the people of this county pay attention. If something offends them or causes suspicion, they have the mechanism to engage or fix a wrong. And I would encourage anybody going forward, that's a great takeaway if you didn't get To me, this is not a question about a factory farm. Thank God I didn't have to hear that. It's about a family wanting to be a, take on a business venture in a way that causes people from here a bit of a pause. They've been great roercrop people, you've heard that said. And now they want to move in a different direction. That's agriculture as I understand it. I live in close proximity to a CAFO, and I'm wind off of another. Do I smell them time to time? That's Iowa as I have lived it. I only hope that, and I asked Scott pointedly on this one, that he applied with his brothers the absolute very best he has to offer every day, because he's right at the doorstep in Nevada. And I'd like to take this one off, this little dog toy that I keep hearing kicked around. Two families determined to grow north. And you've heard from both of them today, and I'm not going to call them out, but they have both told me, they said they have no interest in selling their farm ground. They are going to continue to farm it. So people to say, "Well, we can't grow houses to the north." That is not what I've heard in the last week. And they, to me, are, that's where it is, that's where it's likely to be. Nevada will grow. And sitting here looking at a developer in the room, and we have been staunch by things outside of our community, and we have tried to address as a board of supervisors and can't get anywhere. Nevada is landlocked. But in the sense that behind me is a celebration of economic success that we were all partying to. So when you say that you are expanding, you are virtually doubling a pork processing plant called Burke Marketing in the Nevada on the south side, it doesn't surprise me that there will be additional pork production somewhere, and this is proposed to be on the north side. And that's our story. And I get it, you don't want to live by these things. I get it. I have been nothing but on the farm, and I know what it is like on the noise side, on the dust side, on the smell side, but things are better than they used to be. I suspect they will get better in the years going forward. I am sorry to the people in the back of the room, where you are to all this. I got that story too. I don't know, and I would ask Margaret if she would share, because I keep hearing that the thing that we should do in behalf of Story County is we should deny these applications. And I would ask, what number of counties would we be at that point? How many have gone before us on a voted measure to deny CAFO applications so that it is moved down to the state level? I haven't, I don't recall running across anything I did on research level. Margaret's given me a head shake too. Change is not going to come in the city council in Nevada. Change is not going to come from the board of supervisors, no matter how it's configured. You are going to have to get off, you have to move this enthusiasm and this well-articulated belief and move it into a venue that will give you the desired outcome that you seek. And that will happen with the legislature. I shared with my favorite legislature last week on Thursday about this issue as we were about to confront it. I said, "You found time to legalize fireworks, but you don't look at the CAFO process." And I thought that was just like, come on, we got to try harder, because we all live here, we all experience things that we can do better. I call balls and strikes up there. I do. I do. I can't let my personal feelings take me so far away from the facts as I find them that as you are asked to be sworn in, I will to say you will uphold the laws of the state of Iowa as you find them. And I do my diligence to find the research, to get comfort in the fact that what I get left with is not necessarily what I'd like to choose, but you have to overcome that if you offer yourself up for leadership. So I would...
Okay. So, thank you, Marty. Appreciate what vote you guys had to say. So as has been pointed out a couple of times, I believe really, really strongly that one of government's roles is to help facilitate growth. You can read that as population growth or economic growth or whatever, and I worked really, really hard on that. I believe in all things to try to strengthen our economy the right way. I worked really, really hard on water quality and soil health issues. I believe that if you're interested in the first two I just named, the future for Iowa is in water quality and soil health. We've got to really work hard on that. And my role, I'm so proud of my role in conservation and trying to make sure that Story County is a frontrunner in all our conservation practices. Recently, I've gotten really involved in the Iowa Association of Counties, and in fact, now have assumed a leadership role on the statewide Association of County Supervisors Executive Board. And one of the roles that I've assumed is chair of the policy board. And what we do each year is we get together and we write the priorities for the board supervisors in the state. It's voting on by our entire association, and that goes forward. And one of the, one of the things that I was passionate about pushing, and in fact, is included in our document, is that it is time for the state to completely review this system, the whole master matrix, the entire system that we go through. I talked to every legislator about, hey, it's been since 2003 since we looked at it. The technology, Scott, I don't have any idea how old you were in 2003, but you've grown, the entire industry has grown. It's time to look at this whole thing. And it's up to the state to do that. And I completely get those of you in the audience who are so justifiably impassioned, whether you're justifiably impassioned because you're afraid this is going to directly impact your life, or you're justifiably impassioned because you fundamentally believe that this is not right for agriculture. It's time for all of us to sit down and try to figure this out, and it starts with the state. And so I'll continue to, I'll be down at the, I'll be down in the state house for 30 to 40 days this year during session, and in every conversation, I will mention this. But I also absolutely know that the Henrys are really, really good people trying to do the right thing. I've mentioned that our master matrix system is flawed, but it is our law. And as Marty just mentioned, I will stand right here in a couple of weeks on January 2nd, and I'll retake the oath of office. And the oath of office is, will you support, part of it is, will you support the laws, support and defend the laws of the state of Iowa? Not the laws you like, not what you wish they were, but the laws of the state of Iowa. The other thing that was pointed out to us is that we have to go with the consent of the government. And somehow, this majority that we've heard from on this issue should trump the rule of law. And I'm going to tell you right now, for me, it's not even close. I can disagree with the way the law is, but it is absolute law. And the final thing I'll say is, the problem that I have with saying, yes, the Henrys have complied with the law, yes, they qualify, they get the number of points, they've done everything they need to do to qualify the law, but I'm still going to vote it down so that basically the Henrys can be a pinata to go down to the state and go through another 30 days of getting beat around the head and neck over this issue when they have absolutely complied with the law. So where I'm going to come down on this is, I believe strongly that they've achieved not only the required number of points, but they've gone over the required number of points. points. You can question the system, but they're way above the required number of points. And our law is the law and so I will be voting in support of their application.
I do have a question for our civil attorney. Is it against the law or are we to vote?
No, you're welcome, you're asked to vote.
It's, I just want to make sure.
We all, let's be really clear because this has been pointed out a couple of times. All three of us have the ability to vote to support or deny. And we need to do so that based on whatever it is we decide is driving this. And the only point I tried to make is why I'm going to end up where I am. Ethan, do you have something to add?
I think I just, Loris, that's, that's absolutely right. Regardless of what the score is, the board has this question to go against.
Yes.
And that recommendation though is one of the things that I have to make to, you know, do we recommend yes or do we recommend no?
Okay, anything further or we're going to move on to the vote? We're going to do it one at a time. It's going to start with Richland, 10. And, and so you've got to tell me what you're comfortable with. I know where you're going to end up on this, you made it really clear. But for ease of process, are you willing to second the motion and then vote against it or you didn't need to second the motion? You just tell me.
This is a process and I understand that for, just to be of clarity, if you second and then, then the, it's very clear.
Okay, done. Okay, so we're talking about Richland Township 10. Do I have a motion on the construction permit application?
Remove consideration of construction permit act application for Richland 10 confined feeding operation as submitted by Longview Court.
And I'll second, further discussion up here. Shiddy.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Olson?
No.
Next is section 28.
I would move consideration of a construction permit application for Richland 28, a confined feeding operation as submitted by Longview Court.
And I'll second, further discussion up here. Shiddy.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Olson?
No.
And then 29.
I would move consideration of a construction permit application for Richland 29, a confined feeding operation as submitted by Longview Court.
And I'll second, further discussion. Shiddy.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Olson?
No.
All right, so that brings us to the end of that. We're going to try to move through the rest of our agenda really, really quickly. You guys are welcome to go if you'd like. Next, we don't have additional items? Please be quiet as, or as quiet as possible as related. No A's reports, no departmental report, no other report. So we're actually at public forum number two. Anybody wishing to address the board on another topic? Seeing no one moving to the microphone, liaison assignments. Loris, do you have anything that's so important that we need to do it at 3:45?
Absolutely not.
Marty, anything that we need to do?
Wise woman, I would take her lead.
And I'll do the same, I take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All those in paper say aye.
Aye.